We're not available. And the defendant was also trapped. I hope you will be quite safely. So, well done. Okay, so what we're going to do is case 019. 019. He doesn't want to come up, but we are going to look at the issues. As requested, I will just treat the issues as submitted. And so the secretary will be guide us and then whatever defense we have, we can take that. Lago and welcome and good morning. Okay, thank you, Secretary. Thank you very much, honorable Chairperson. Today's proceedings are in two parts. The first will be to finish the pending complaints that we started yesterday. And the second part will be then a full focus on heavier issues in custodial centers across the country. We will do the introduction immediately after the dealings regarding the complaints. You will recall that the first case which was done yesterday was case number C/2024 by 25 IIP C019. This case relates to issues around high level of preference, ways of religious inclination, acceptance of minors, unofficial transactions between inmates and officers. I would plead that we deal with these issues immediately after we have dealt with the next case I'm about to call. And what I would recommend is that the Nigerian Correctional Service may wish to speak to us on some of these issues that have been highlighted and give recommendations as they deem fit and order stakeholders in this room to also make their contribution. I want to also mention that those who are lying will also be allowed at their discretion to make statements in the declarations of today. Now, if you permit me, I will go straight to case number C202425IIPC024. This case was one of the cases that was done yesterday. And this relates to issues surrounding settling violations. And we already have the complaints regarding this issue. So I would recommend that the NBA Council as well as Nigerian Association meet. All right, thank you. I just need to make sure that the secretary. Thank you very much. We, the panel, there's cool recognition, there's cool recognition of the fact that we have the meeting of the NBA Council of Nigeria as well as Nigerian Association for the declaration that is about to start. I will therefore at this moment ask that we will go to the virtual issues and mindful of the issue regarding the case. So I'm thinking that the best way to proceed is to read out the complaints. And once we read out the complaints, we will ask the complainant through if he is in position to adopt what has been read and then perhaps leave additional information if he so wishes. And if there is anything that is contrary to your line, let us. So we will continue. And thereafter, the respondent will have an opportunity, because I think.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mohammed is my humble name. My humble appearance is for the Nigerian Correctional Service as well as the officers mentioned from one to sixteen. My designation is Deputy Director Ega. Among the sixteen officers mentioned, we only have one present before the panel. The number one on the list, Friday Obe, Assessor Bala. All others would not be, sorry, we have some, two others. The respect of this, C024, we have only one defendant, that is the first person on the list. All others could not be.
Oduchi Lokki, CSC, in charge, Ants, Uit, Edo State. Mister High Flying, Sebo Savant, Hotel Owner in Aroba, Beni City. K3, Obegon, ASC2, Abdurrahman, Momon, ASC2. Adahin Odion, ASC2, Oidou, Enodi, Akanya, CC. Sis, Old Beni Custodia Center, CC Sifiru, in charge, Oko Custodia Center. Mrs. Priscilla, who's a civilian, in charge, Pizzing Club, Oko Custodia Center. Hely, Sharon, ASC1. Mister Okocha, DSCC, former in charge, Old Beni Custodia Center. Please, Secretary, to ensure that the team of Laco and NBA sees of the facts of this case.
Sorry, can I say something?
Yes, sir. Just tell us what you mean.
I know before this presentation, these mentions of their, their assignment, I mean, that they must not go to us. So we will not get interrupted there. However, we have the first person present before the panel.
Okay, so you have the names, but you could not trace them, that's what was interesting. Did you add, did you write to the secretary to give you details of their investigation?
When we talked, we talked that all the variables will be available for us to make a connection before that.
No, what I'm saying is assuming that there were information required to help you to trace them. I wanted to know whether you communicated with secretary requesting those information. You do not. All right, what would, if now, to make it even easier, we want to read the complaints. Then the complainant will be made to let us know whether, which are, which are Controller of Correctional Services, now Assistant Controller General, Emi Nola, Philomena. Kate Ofure, Erabo, ASC1. Chief Warden of Oko Custodia Center, DSC Kenoye, CFC Sanusi, Ige Onewe. All in Oko Custodia Center, others to mention, but a few. They are all dragonic and as a support of the NBA to Minis. Tunde is the PA in charge, Correctional Service Affairs with the Ministry of Ministry. He gives them all the information about all the activities that goes on on the minister's Friday over here about the promotion list that his name came out in number four in DCG. DCG Friday Ove is a very corrupt, evil to just, he does, he does these, he does these things with impunity. Emi Nola, Philomena, ACG, Assistant Controller General, in charge of Edo State Command. She's very, very evil minded. But this, the sponge color is, of course, we will, just reading what is there, but this is not language that we use in college. She's involved in trafficking of illicit items like cocaine, heroin, Indian hair, kuru, and kandhi, which are ASC1, Kate Ofure, Erabo, SC Sanusi, Ige Kenowe. DSC Kenoye, and the in charge, Oko Custodia Center, Sifiru. She makes up to one million naira. She made up to one million naira into her NBA account of, and the NBA account number is also stated here. During the governorship election, she was giving one hundred fifty million naira to share among officers under a low state law. And she took the money from the governor, called him Obaseki, and lured it into her account. The governor gave her, her account must go big size bank, not to share. His PA, Alist, is better, and ASC, ASC2, Momon, Abdurrahman. They are all officers during the budget month 2020, March 2023, and March 2024. The inmates who gave that five hundred thousand in two different fold. In Oko Custodia Center, the inmates have five people, they're both US agents. They used to transfer deals. SC Sanusi, Ige Onewe, is a very notorious, serious officer, very systemic in illicit items when men in trafficking affairs. He's primarily involved in selling Indian headphones and recharge cards to inmates in Oko Custodia Center. He was transferred five times out of Rungoba, but DCG Friday Ove brought him back because of DCG getting the debts from the visitors. CSC Oduchi Lokki, Etahaghe, is a senior officer in charge of the arrangement of Edo State Command of Nigerian Correctional Service in, in 2011, even after all this. He's a member of a very notorious squad group of the Black Arts Fatality. He's involved in posting officers, people to guide protests owned by Mister High Flying, Ega, Aroba, in Beni City, and a woman, a woman in Oko Central. The DCG Friday Ove and ACG Philomena is aware of this. They pay him one million naira for garbage every month. He do post the members of his squad group to replace, among them are ASC2, K3, Akayor. ASC2, Abdurrahman, Momon. He does this act with impunity. ASC Abdurrahman, Momon, is a woman, was in one of the, in one of the ten years, and was killed. He broke his way and came back into the army. He is a member of a notorious secret group called the Five Kings, all of the school officers in Beni City, those things, and he is serving that company. Adahin Odion, ASC2, is a senior officer in charge of EDC conjugal affairs in Oko Custodia Center. He makes up to five hundred thousand naira every month, and is answerable to DCG Friday Ove. ACG Friday Ove, Emi Nola. He give him, Emi Nola and CC Sifiru, in charge of Oko Custodia Center. This is Idou, Enodi, sorry, I had a conversation. This is Idou, Enodi, Hamen. She is the twice in charge, Old Beni Custodia Center. She and the chief warden are primarily involved in selling cocaine, heroin, Indian hair, and kerosene. It means, he does, he does this, he does this with impunity. Erabo Osume, Kate, ASC1 of Oko Custodia Center. She is primarily concerned in selling cocaine, Indian hair, through the sale of Solodo, Ifan, Emeka, Uman, all in Detro. She also work hand in hand with the chief warden called DSC Kenoye and in charge, Oko Custodia Center, CC Sifiru. She makes up to one million naira every week, which is, which is in deposited in her GTP bank. And her godfather is DCG Friday Ove, who she gives five hundred thousand naira every month into his asset bank accounts and sellings. The DCG is her protective cover. The DCG is her protective cover. All officers in Edo State Command are aware of it. She was transferred out of Oko Custodia Center in three different locations because of the illegal trafficking business. DCG Friday Ove brought her back with the office power, which is very dragonic. That has stopped over joint is the Pizzing Club, where she coordinates most of her illegal business before bringing it into the yard. A civilian called Miss Priscilla, in charge of Oko Pizzing Club. She is involved in most of the trafficking network in Oko Custodia Center. She do not, she do put her own cocaine and heroin inside her malab, or more than given. She has been in possession of the Pizzing Club for fifteen years. In regard that most of the past controllers gave her notice, she remains firm. She is very dragonic and disrespectful. There is called this business that she doesn't know, her godfather is DCG Friday Ove. A C man, Hely, Sharon, service number, he gave the service number, 49269. Of Nigerian Edo, of Nigerian Edo State Correctional Service, Edo State Command, Nigerian Correctional Service. She was infected by a death to inmate, he broke the Old Beni Custodia Center, Saturday, wrote Beni City. The name of the inmate is called Obeng, a woman, now starving in death, as they told me to precise. He was moved from Old Beni Custodia Center to the Wilmington Custodia Center to avoid noise by the DCG Friday Ove, because money was involved. This affair happened last year. DCG Friday Ove is a sober, and ACG Philomena, Emi Nola, might even tell you on naira by the family of the inmate to kill the issue and to protect the woman because they have taken her as a wife. The former in charge of Old Beni Custodia Center is aware of this issue. God, this is Okocha is aware and can testify this, and this is, and we have the contact of the person. Then it says, some officers were punished because they raised eyebrow. DCG Friday, DCG Friday, which is some of them are ASC2, in, in that USA joint, was transferred and implicated because of this issue. And ASC1, Mister Alist, was last part of Edo State. And presently now, Hely, Esten, Sharon, doesn't want to work because of the money they gave DCG NBA Friday. Please, sir, the minister and the permanent secretary, Minister of Ministry of Ministry should note that there is. They not talk, talk about what to say in the morning. And then he said, please, this petition should be treated with all seriousness. Then he says, please do note that DCG Friday Ove do post that, CCG Halam, Navabat is his girlfriend, and the PSO are his men. And he also mentioned PA 20, that all in his field, just as there. Okay, so this is the petition that the panel received of. And on the strength of this petition, the panel decided to take serious action to verify the authenticity of what they have brought before us. So we now ask, we will now ask the IT to have the complainants issued, but please, we will like that the videos are not open and the names not indicated. So we would want to make sure, and basically, he, he should be unmuted, he or she should be unmuted. And we want to just ask whether this complaint has read, if it represents what has been conveyed. And then I will pull it back to the PA and Laco to ask any few questions that they want. Then we invite the Nigerian Correctional Service to stay there. So what it, I, can we drink, I want to. Okay, quickly. Microphone, please, sir.
Right in the home of the city, presenting the idea of the justice. While watching our break, what, you want to seek, to create the brilliance of this trial for avail the service to the copy of the complaint. That is the more, number two, all the allegations are criminal in nature and they are indicted. And in that circumstance, without prejudice to this product, the complainant must prove this allegation beyond doubt.
Okay, just thank you, okay, yeah, okay.
I want the copy of that complaint, so that maybe after the session.
Yes, okay, I thank you very much. Please tip off the minister that this was possible for the correction, is permission of the correction service that the award of the panel is being granted. The panel is also mindful about the need for Nigerians to be able to see that the minister means well in terms of the transparency of the process that he wants to do. But I do claim, I agree that he would get the comment. Please, are you, are you confirmed that you are hearing me?
Yes.
Please.
Morning, sir.
Thank you very much. Please, did you, this here, all of the readings of the complaints that were received by the panel? Did you, did you listen, did you?
Yes, sir.
Does that, does that represent the fact, the content of the complaint that you submitted to the panel? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there, are there some additional information you would like the panel to be aware of?
Yes.
And you, then, please, let us know this.
Yes. Morning, sir.
Good morning.
A particular officer here, CX Sanusi, Ahelwar, was transferred out of Oko Custodia Center, Jemari. As I'm talking to you now, they are preparing, bringing him to Beni Custodia Center. In charge, the president in charge, his name is Adam Seri. He said he doesn't want him because of his illicit art, because of his illicit conduct. He was taken to the event quarter. Now, he's coming his way back, not to that Custodia Center, to the Old Beni Custodia Center. Any moment from now, he will be there, because they are going to. Very human, you see. In that, her own illicit art. Her own younger brother, ASC2. He apparently, the woman was occupied, he gave it to the brother. It can be found now, but he yet, generate us, and what that is, is this anyone in the bar? The taters are talking to you. Philomena has immunity clause. He also believe, as far as he says, nobody can do anything. This every morning, woman shot here, she really collected it. A lot of person can justify, more than one, one already come to justify, over this particular moment. Right, the officer, oh, paid off for a year ago. Paid off for a year ago. They call her Iron Lady, that's Iron Lady. She's not afraid to transparent because of her illicit art. The early, early is a way of her illicit behavior, but they're not able to apprehend her because of this magic net she uses, the body powers. She is sad most of this is in her private art, with trade attached to it. She goes into the sea bay, go to their restroom and remove all these things and get away in and call the chief order and disseminate whatever they want to disseminate and give them what they want to give them. Free, eh, paid off for a year ago, it's on the question.
Okay, I would like to stop you at the moment, because most of the things you say have already been reflected in the complaints which, and you said you've adopted. We will, then, it still be on, because there will be the need for specific questions and further specific clarifications. Would that be okay, sir?
Much more respect.
Thank you, sir.
I go up.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, I would want to ask if the NBA and Laco would want to say something briefly before we talk with Nigerian Correctional Service for their own defense. If, if you prefer, that we call the correction service, so then we will do some process. There's some instructions you have to ask question of those sides, please, and we will do that, you know. We just want to, so we're not following any regimented process technicalities. So we just want to make sure as much as possible the truth is out and as much as possible we are clear. Nigerian Correctional Service, please, you can now make your presentations as soon as you can, at the moment.
Good morning, once again. My representation is for the service. On top part of the commission will be answered by the ACG. But for the service, our honor is to represent.
Can you help us, IT, to switch it? IT help us so that we can hear. Please, help us to that, for now.
For the service, we found that the allegation is heavy. First, I'm being charged with criminal offense, because all the allegations are criminal in nature. At the same time, it's required, it's required for the service to go into the allegation and see what the service could do. So, I have just, in this, thank you. At the same time, I would like to present the DCG to, to explain how to respond to this allegation for the panel.
Thank you very much, and afternoon also. Thank you, sir. Please stand there. Sir, please, can you let this on the panel, your full name, blank, and, and this.
Just listen, sir. Panel. Let me stand, the already existed protocol. Over the Friday, this is my habit. A Deputy Complac General of Correction, May 2nd, 1990. I rode through the rank, to the rank of Assistant Complac General of Correction. And I was meant to be in charge, so G, concluding five states. Edo, Delta, Anna Bla, Enugu, Anagbo State. My zona office was in Beni. My zona office was in the name. I coordinate all these five zones, five states.
Please, can you repeat this, yes, sir?
Edo, Delta State, Anabra State, Enugu State, Anagbo State. I coordinate the activities of these five states. I send report to National Airporters, Abuja. And I, I hit and haste doing what I would love in all the five states to advise my emails and my staff. On my own, I'll be sent several, at so many custodial centers. Even while I was a controller, in charge Delta State Command. The C G, because of the trust he had in me, I was sent to Udi Char Custodial Center to conduct search, and I searched so many things, which I brought to the National Airporter, Abuja here. There was a controller in Delta, in, uh, in Anabra City.
Again, it forms, it includes issues around conjugal visits and so many things around that, that is forced within corruption and the rest of it. I want to ask you, in your capacity as the zona coordinator with the responsibility of oversight and supervision of correctional centers or whatever you're committed, have you ever heard, seen, or been, um, of the view that some of the allegations are things that you, you know, you had to address during your supervision? Because I, I just want to get you on some information around your role and the kind of challenges and issues that were, uh, that were prevalent or if you are, at least you are, in existence.
Thank you very much. As a zona coordinator, I don't have anything to do in the correctional facility, center. We have officer in charge those centers, we have controller in charge those, in charge states that supervises all the activities of issues in the facilities, not the zona coordinator. I go on quarterly visits to know or listen to complaints about emails and stuff. There is no time, someone drew my attention, I heard about some complaints. It's not my responsibility, and the controller did tell me anything about this allegation, and that the officer in charge of those correctional centers. It's not only Edo, as I've already said, I take the responsibility of Edo, Delta, Anabra, Ebo, Enugu State.
Okay, sir, so, um, please help me understand a little bit better. So, from what you said, you have never conducted any search in any of the correctional centers, in the do, the search of the facility, never did any?
No.
Now, you did mention that you were sent to the, of the char custodial center and that you knew what you discovered. Then you mentioned, what were the kind of things you found?
I found so many A C Bs prohibited articles.
Exactly.
Rated from Idia Hemp, Fools, and others, they call Umini, that are not allowed to be in a custodial center. Those are the articles, items we discovered. Those items were packaged, assent to the National Airporter. And if you verify, those items, as you do, as you're talking now. So, there is no time, I remember the word in the email presentation, as a zona coordinator.
Okay, sir, I, I have some more questions, but I'm positive now and ask the Nigerian Association and the N A C S O to raise any questions for clarification or anything you would like to ask the decision, and then I'll come back for further clarification. Thank you very much, sir, thank you, sir. Um, M B A, you have any questions or comments from here, or clarification? But we need to use a moment, people that want to talk about that. I don't know that they go back, everyone's.
Yes, you said that your duty is to supervise both in Anandra, including A D State, am I correct?
Yes.
Now, you went to do searches in Udi Char, please, custodial center, is it?
As a controller there, not as a zona coordinator.
As a controller.
Because of the trust, the authority in Abuja, they know everywhere I go, they have the result. After sending people from National Airporter, once, no sources. Secondly, the mandated controller to go and conduct search, no sources. Then the officer in charge, the new officer in charge, started worrying, worrying National Airporter that there are so many illicit drugs that cannot allow me to do this drug effectively. I was now mandated.
Okay, but easier.
As a, as a, so that, as a controller.
But as a zona, one, the question now that, is your duty to oversee any, any correctional center? Is your air power to check any action going on in that, etc., do you have the power?
I have the power if I, if I'm told. I have the power if I'm told by the controller, through the outside judge.
So, is only when you have, when the controller direct, not your air power to supervise, or your good, and the zona.
That is when I have power to go round, quarterly visits. If there's any complaint, they used to bring the complaint before me.
Okay, you have power to do seasonal visits.
Yes.
Quarterly visits.
Yes.
And now, during the process, you have the power to also check whatever that's happening in the centers.
Yes.
Do you do any of this thing they do, this area they brought out this allegation?
All this allegation is very strict to me as we are here. If certain allegations are led, all this thing happened, the officer in charge, the custodial center, we complete to the controller, and the control.
If I move your. And the staff of that center, you know, the center, independent of the controller, the charge, owner, the charge, or even the charge.
Why I am here, I will go round, cell by cell, listen to complaints of, listen to complaints of the illness. Then, after finishing with them, I will interface with the staff. Based on the information, there is never a time I went to any custodial center in A D State that issues like that, this were brought before me.
That's all. You know, Mr. High Fly, you know, Mr. High Fly.
I don't know who is the High Fly.
Oh, oh, my, I don't know.
I don't know, oh, my, I don't know who High Fly.
You have account, Zelibat and Access Bank, do you?
I know, I have account, Zelibat is my account, I don't have account in the Access Bank, I don't go pay to Access Bank.
So, can you provide the account of the Access Bank, the Zelibat?
I, how? Don't remind me, just by now, that's the answer for him. I, I, I'm, I'm, just, I'm, I'm coming, I'm coming, please, sir, I'm going to, you can raise this question, if you want, you can come through such a. Okay, so, um, so for that, no, no, don't worry. Are there something I would like to know, let's, let's finish asking, ask all the questions you have, okay? He wants, he's trying, I, I need you to, hold your second key parts to this. Remember, remember that this assignment, even for the very first part, part of what we also did, we were seized with the account numbers of some officer that the minister had also asked us to test it to do so. So, I think that it is well within what we mean, but you don't announce it before, you can say, it's also for, good for the correctional service to also know this. So, you, you need not to, you, you make the.
The guy that she raised the papers that I brought out, that was in your house. What was that paper is for? There is no truth.
Okay, um, sorry. Okay, just, just.
When, when the, please, when the lawyer was announcing that he has.
I think, I said.
You said he will respond.
I said, I represent the service, I'm going to this check them first, this test charge from the service. Okay, there were two things that happened. Your very first time you announced, you said that. The second time you came, you clearly asked for a copy of the complaints. You did clearly state that you are represented in Nigerian Correction Service. And said, he will answer for himself, and then, in fact, that if it is a criminal matter, that you require that you need to have enough time to deal with this, and that, that was when I didn't explain to you the two and of the work that went down.
Couldn't get me right.
Okay, but.
I'm representing both the service and the office of the service.
Okay, so what, what I think that we need to do here, there are two parts. Um, remember that part of the work of the panel is about comprehensive reforms. The panel is seated here, the chair is seated, who is the panel secretary that has oversight, over the Nigerian Correction Service. So, let's see the much we can get applied, I feel what was in, and I do know that this matter we are in today. So, please, um, the, that, that's just, but I, I did, because I get, the issue was that the first part, you had indicated you were caring for the correctional service, and you clearly stated that one person be here, the second time, you said it was only the correctional service, but it's okay. And, and said that he needs to respond, you said.
You, you, that's, that's all, you, you were the one that you wrote it about to raise. Um, with due respect to the panel, I am directed to represent the service.
From what you required, which is the complaint, and the chair had already, uh, advised that you made a clarification to. Secondly, I want now for, um, because I would like to, I'll call you back, there are some issues I have in relation to the service. But I still have some more questions for the decision, so, uh, for clarification, and these things are important, because it is, part of what we are trying to do is to ensure that we are able to have a comprehensive view, not only about this particular case, but about, um, the holistic package of across the whole country. So, information that we are asking are also meaningless and achieve those two trends. So, I do have some question, and maybe the pan sec may also have questions for, or others, I still do have questions for the decision. So, let me, after that, we'll call you, because we also have issues that we need you to clarify. Thank you, sir. But also, in relation to what you mentioned, you saw at the, on the char custodial center, on the char custodial center, when you went to do the search. Please remind us again, the items you said you saw at the onichan custodial center when you went to do the search.
As I said earlier, there were so many complaints in Udi Char Custodial Center. Why I was a controller, I'm in charge, I'm in charge, Delta State Command. He said, because I know you can do it. I said, sir, I just am with you now. He said, your boys can do it, he said, your boys can do it. From, in his presence, I sent my boys from Udi Char, from, uh, Delta, Asaba, organizing overnight, by five A M, they were in Udi Char. They even analyzed this before the controller, the in charge in Udi Char. They waited at the head bridge to the correctional center there. When they called the controller, I was still in Abuja. The following day, I'm saying now, I left, I was on the way, where the data there, did sort of, total searching. And as they were video the searches, and the work they were collecting, they were sending me, I was related with, to the Controller General, he had brought me. And those things were packaged, and the controller sent there.
What were those items?
Items, if I check my phone, they can still be there.
We may need to see.
Idia hemp, Idia hemp, Fools.
Fools.
These cookie stoves. Jerkas of different illicit, uh, liquid drugs, they call Umini, all those items we have delivered here. So, those are, were the items we discovered.
So, what, the cooking stoves, were they part of what they use for the drugs, or what, what is it?
I don't know, but there were many.
Okay, so.
Because kerosene was there, we don't allow cooking, individual cooking stoves with kerosene.
Okay, so, these, these things you observed were from on the char custodial centers?
Yes.
Do they have similar things in other custodial centers?
Uh, the, where the controller and the officer in charge, they're supposed to go into, we have rules and regulations.
No, 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 let us stop the question.
They, they, they have, but if, if they have, the officers are not doing their work, by sacking them out.
No, no, what I'm trying to find that, all of these items, they are also similar to what is reported in the, in the complaint. So, what I wanted to do, because this was on the chart, and you saw all of this.
Yes.
So, the question is that, are other custodial centers also having similar items that of what you found in Udi Char?
I will not, I will not exactly tell you yes or no.
Why, sir?
Because if a case like that was reported, the controller in charge takes, this is responsibility.
No, I, I know, sir.
They have, they, some of them have.
Okay, some of the custodial centers have, so the question here is that, will the custodial centers in A D State be among some of those ones that have some of this? And you know, part of what we have done, I believe that we didn't take note here, but with the transparency, the body in charge and acting C G C, and all of the persons from correctional service and other participants, but have been exchanging information and providing information here. Our interest is that we need to reform that both the correctional service and Nigerian be better for it. So, I do believe that you will be speaking on that understanding of clear transparency to ensure that the truth is, uh, when one unetted. So, the question also is, these kinds of things you saw in the nature custodial centers, does the custodial center in A D State have custodial centers?
Why, I still repeat myself, there is no custodial center in the country today that don't have those items in. But it depends on the degree, and if as a zona coordinator, I have no right to go into custodial centers.
I understand that point, we will come back, I will also come back to that, those points made, I want to ask another question before we come back to this issue. Now, that it's been established, that from what you just said, that all custodial centers do have these items of Idia Hemp, all of these illicit. I want to form again your students and what the house we have, you know, gotten from the onichan states. Don't you think this reason, or how this is going?
Respect, respect. I told, I told you, thank you so much. The issue of visiting across, by one, some of our staff, they are smoking this thing in. They are pumped, that if you, the officers in charge, visiting in, especially in the night, these are the ways to get it.
Solutions, what are the things you guys can use?
For sometimes, we are, we are in, uh. For sometimes we are, we are in, uh, agitating for German. If there is German in our correctional centres, those that we know that these things are common, instead of using communicating, what about you want to do? If there is German in our custodial, correctional centre, all these things will be a thing of the past. Secondly, the visit, the relations of the image, there should be sensitization to know that you have somebody in that place that is meant to be corrected. You are bringing idiah hand as a religion, as a wife. What do you think about the person that is meant to be corrected, why in a custodial centre? They should also be told to, white communication. So these are the two ways I can now tell you we can call all these things on.
So, so from what you said, you've addressed two of the issues you highlighted as the ways this, yeah, uh, problem comes. The first, a- actually, you had, uh, you, you first you said, sometimes it's their visitors that claim it. So you have recommended sensitization as one way to address this issue for the visitors. So that, then you say part of what they bring is phones, which means if we have Germans, it means that those phones will not be useful for them and the other. But there were other ways you highlighted that.
Who might be, apart from going to, resident to this position? The issue of shortage of staff is another problem we are experiencing now. Shortage acute, when I says shortage, it's not always shortage, acute. This way our staff to be working twenty-four hours, no leave. Before now, it used to be terryship, but today we have, have money too. Staff are easily worn out, especially those on night duty. Bees, bees, their bees are not properly guarded. That is for that. There's any staff caught, we have a way of discipline. Not to bossing, they are situation, why in there?
Chair, to sit there for a moment, and I would take up that. You said, one, before you go, you send a schedule of your movement ahead. And number two, you said you ensure that the controller accompany you. And I imagine that this probably is the most surprising for many zona coordinators and to a greater extent. So, I don't know, guys, on the disadvantages, if you, if there are any.
The, one of the advantages of, of all the staff in a particular custodial centre, every person must wait to see the zona coordinator. To address them, to be of a good behaviour and to do their job well. It's not passing the information that they don't hear from the zona coordinator. That is one of the advantages. There's secondly, they should responsible to the controller, controller is responsible to pay. It will, it will lead, it does this to them, or the things are not done secretly. The only area I can go, or even not even a zona coordinator, except Abuja, zona, the national, uh, office, migrate me if you have any serious search they want to conduct. We don't need to inform, inform any person. That is from the, that is from the national, uh, uh, office. They, before then, they will hear that so, something is happening and we, they will act on that. It is spotted, and that the good of this, we have noticed a conduct search.
Yes, um, you are asking for the advantages and disadvantages. Do you think that that parental notification has any disadvantage?
Yes.
What are the disadvantages, sir?
Uh, they will, when they hear the zona coordinator is coming, they will clear the areas that are dirty, that the big man is coming. When I was officer in charge, one, I started with call, I started, I went to Aunche, I headed Oko. This Oko that they are saying now. As officer in charge, I don't wait for the, 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 the general is coming. I do declare everywhere should be next.
So I want to come back to this. Given the full show of the zona coordinator and the objective of your quarterly visit, weighing what you have reflected as the advantage and what you communicated as the disadvantage, which one do you think surpasses the other?
Is the advantage, yes.
Let me repeat again these advantages, sir. You said those advantages are true. Number one, because you want to take copies since of all staff and want to then to be here directly from you, not having your message relayed to them, or anyone. So you tell them so that all of them will be present to you. Number two, you said you do not want to take the controller on a worse. It is the controller's domain that only time you can go without being announced is if it's from the headquarters. That those two are the advantages of giving parental notification before you come. And then, for the disadvantage, which you say now weighs, weighs low, lower than these two, is that people will cover whatever they are doing that is not right because the big man is coming. I want to ask that question again, sir. Given the two advantages you gave us and the one disadvantage you gave us for notification that happens when we notify ahead of time and understanding the importance of the oversight role of the zona coordinator and the objective of those visit, which one do you think outweighs the other? The advantages or the disadvantages?
Of letting them know that.
Beforehand.
Beforehand. Uh, I've said it, that I will be fridge into their responsibility. I don't want to usurp their authority, their powers. It is mandatory. I've only, I, I told you these taxes where I can be migrated to go to that place on a night. The only area I see, I is not only the staff, I always listening to emails, complaints. Not only staff, because emails, dear emails will tell me so many things. So the advantage of letting them know that I'm around.
Then I, because I wanted to ask him. Okay, okay, so this, you know, I'm going back to those things you said you were doing, that's. And again, thank you again to C G because the information you're giving us is really, really very important. And I have no doubt it will guide this part. Thank you very much because we're learning a lot. We are also seeing some of the root problems from your presentation and again, thank you. You know, we've just finished addressing the one that regarding informing them ahead of your visit. And we've identified or found the advantages and disadvantages of that. The second point you mentioned was that whenever you go, you have to have the controller accompany you as you are doing that work. I will ask again, sir, what are the advantages and disadvantages of going along with the controller as you moved along? You know, this, this is, I, I heard, I beyond the one advantage for, for a, a notification before you go. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you so much. It's part of life. The controller in charge states is closer to the emails at the outside and that is zona coordinator. So it is also in our rule that, in our rule, that I cannot go into while there is a controller in charge the states. Then I will just leave and go into the custodial centre.
It would be nice that we don't have secondary comments.
Okay, no, no.
But if anybody want to say something after the decision, please do indicate and I'm sure a manager will rather use.
It is, it is in our S O B rule that as a zona coordinator, you cannot just leave your office where there is a controller in charge the states. I will leave my office as a zona coordinator and cannot go to the states without letting the zona coordinator to be aware that he is coming and the state controller. So we don't, we, we do, we have stages by stages how our laws are stipulated. So that is it.
No, I, I, you know, I was trying to say something before.
It's mandatory, partner.
And, yes.
Mandatory that the controller will go with me.
Yes, the, the question is not the, 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 as I said, it's not where you derive that practice. My question is, what are the advantages and disadvantages? That's what I asked. So the reason, please, let me just see, and it's important that we understand this. There may be something that we already have the right to do, but it may be causing problems. If we know, we part of the recommendation will be hard to modify that. So it is not whether it's what we did is lawful or not lawful. It is from his experiences, what are the advantages and disadvantages? That, that's what we want to know, please, if there are. Are there advantages for that parties and a disadvantage if there is? That's what my question.
I've told you part of the advantages.
Which is?
That the advantage, one of the advantages is that the place would meet.
Okay, the place would meet before you go.
Yes, we plan the sovereignty to see a big man is coming to visit, which is natural. It's just like the head of state is visiting my village now. The, the traditional rule, I mean, make sure the place is put in place.
So is that an advantage or disadvantage?
It's, uh, to me, it's a disadvantage. Because it's supposed to be meet at all time.
Yeah, so, so this is a disadvantage.
Yes.
Is there any advantage?
Advantage.
Do we have any because you've just mentioned the disadvantage?
Yes.
There's any advantage of this?
Yes.
What is the advantage?
The advantage is I'll be able to see all the staff to relay the information.
This question is, is the other one asking, this one is the one you and the controller will be going around.
Yes.
Does it have any disadvantage and advantage?
It has advantage, it has disadvantage.
But you just tell us that so that, because there are people waiting for us.
Yes, the advantage is what I told you just now. One, the disadvantage is that the place will be kept neat.
The advantage?
The advantage is I'm able to see, listen to the place of the staff, all the staff and the emails.
But if the controller is not, you can say to that by your power as a zona coordinator.
Um, the figure of the said domain.
Okay, so he needs to be present.
He, I don't know anywhere as a state controller.
Thank you.
If the person will leave me to any correctional centre, I want to.
Thank you, and I also think that there may be more. For example, there may be things you need the controller to be aware of so that for necessary full ops or for further clarification. And there are two hands that will be quick so that we, because we still need the correctional service. Uh, I think the N B A has the question and after that, Professor from Paris University has a question also.
Thank you so much. Um, Officer Godia, you, in the course of responding to a question, you said that one of the things you do, if you find that an officer was involved in bringing the seats of the van, I said to the centre, that all of this could be the most pressing transfer, transfer the person out of that centre, right? Yeah, now, in the course of looking at this, so partner, that's the rapport of a case was transferred out three times. What was that? Three times, and she was brought back to this same, same Oko that is the yours, tried under your watch as D C G. What you, what you don't think that is concerning?
Thank you so much. I became the zona coordinator twenty, twenty-three. I'm not aware if Kate, a rapport, have been involved in any in visits or whether you have several worked in Oko. I know a rapport as a, as a.
Because you find that sometimes, this is a counterfund, a break, brought into centres by visitors. Is that I don't conduct search of visitors, like something like phone, drugs and all of that. It's not something you just put, um, it's not such a small, such a, like you just bring a, 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 a sneeze. Is that you don't conduct search of visitors to the, to the centres?
Uh, as I already said, any visitor that comes in to visit his emails or his husband or relation from the gate, they will sit there, they will take the name, the address and the person is going to visit. And whatever they bring from the gate, they will do a search of them before it will be allowed to enter the yard. But despite, despite all these things put in place, we still find them going into the yard. Despite all this security measure, they have a system of identities. There was a time, they caught person, put this in a vault. They got the, a lady, they put her safe inside the vault. The way they did it, they shot, there is no way you can detect. Some ladies, they go into putting these things in the yard. This thing is very difficult. So this shoe, this shoe, they get a way to cut it, we have detected all this. They will cut it.
Okay, um, this C G, um, I think.
I will stop you there. Um, this is a case that we really need to thoroughly investigate as a service, as a ministry. And we come back again to it because these allegations are huge, okay? What the appeals we received, like to first of all, have this, um, kind of session before we look at that. We are going to oblige the service with a copy of the petition for the legal aids and N B A also have it, you do your bits. We would advise this C G that you see us and give us the details of your man so that we can at least get your own, the service will provide us with all the ones that have been mentioned. It will do us good for all the officers to provide the information because you know we can get information even if you choose not to, okay? So it's better for us to all be playing and see how best to handle this. So I'm going to stop this session because like I said, we have been lots to investigate. And that will be it for now, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Chair, uh, I want us quickly to have announcement of the members of the different professional associations. As you know, today we are focusing on the healthcare. We only took the leftover sessions, um, from the yesterday session. So can we please have the introduction of the professional associations here as well as introduction of the team of the correctional services, especially those on health related matters? as well as introduction of the team of the correctional services, especially those on health related matters? Please kindly do it right now if you can so that the panelists, we know the agencies that are here.
Good morning. My name is Professor Tabor James Pobino and I am the president, Association of Psychologists. Thank you.
Good morning, I am Dr. Abigail O'Leary, a clinical psychologist, trauma specialist and a child healing therapist representing the National Association of Clinical Psychologists. I'm here with my colleague, Dr. Tru Reisman.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Princess Aisha Isia Wutu, the deputy president, North of Alasutaka Society. Um, with me is my colleague, um, Tad Gavuti, also the second with of the domestic of Alasutaka Society of Nigeria. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, we will ask, we will ask the Nigerian Correctional Services team to introduce themselves and also also specialty use also from the health field. The medical, the medical people, please kindly do so.
I'm the chairman of the panel, I'm Dr. Glory Esien, Assistant Controller General of Corrections in charge of medical and clinical services.
Good morning, Doctor, I understand, Assistant Controller General Corrections Medical and then the Chief Medical Director of the Henry African Brotherhood of the Chastity as a national airport. Good morning, sir. Doctor, you are new here, you see.
Good morning, sir. I'm Veronica Mofogo, Assistant Controller General of Nigerian Correctional Services probably to nursing and health services.
Good morning, sir. My name is Doctor Ansu E, SCG, mental services.
Good morning. I'm Venu Alabwa, Assistant Controller of Corrections, Mental Health and Psychological Services.
Good morning, sir. I am pharmacist Mohamed Bashir, Assistant Controller General Corrections in charge of our circumstances.
Good morning, sir. I am Morde Sike Munk, Controller of the SC.
Okay, thank you very much and welcome to the medical team represented here by this and health, people can look at movies themselves and come back at the team.
Please can we, can we come together? We want to quickly, we have a downlist of health professional associations that will be addressing us. But first, we would like the correctional service, the representative of the controller general, we will need you to make the brief presentation on the health status of correctional service. And after that, there may be a very few sort of, um, implication to the subject matter. And then we start here, any of the running for all of the professional associations here. Okay, thank you very much, please, I encourage everyone and even in this session, the UAC National Health, that we are a part session, National UAC Association, NGOs and all that that are here present, you can also ask questions after. So they just, this, our mentor for us for today now for this part is on health. We're going to hear the correctional service speak to us. Take notes, please, all the professional associations do take note so that when you are making the presentation, part of the thing we want for your presentation solution is partnership, is support. We do the Nigerian correctional service so that whatever problem we are hearing, they can say as a whole, we still have a provider solution, okay? Everything we are, the panel is doing in all of the sessions and I pray that all of you have the program for the whole uh, from now to the fourteen. If you don't, please make sure you let us know that secondly, because every day there is a focus. And our work is not, it is, it is more like exploring, you can see even from the first stage, we want to know more so that we know what we need to know. Uh, although it's coming from, um, I think, I don't, please just know that we will still come back to you today because your matter is, is there, we're taking some part of it, it will just be a little bit bad. But next thing we do because the past several years, so we know you're here, so, sorry that you came. So the correctional service will now address us, please do take note as they are addressing because from whatever they are learning, we will now determine what's of what and what are the issues. If you need clarification, you must also ask.
Thank you. Uh, members of the panel, I'm a, a patient. It's a professional out and the narrative is better taken by the head of the medical team. So I will create the indulgence of the panel to allow me to invite Dr. Esien to give the narrative. Yes, arrive, thank you very much.
Good morning.
Microphone, yes.
Good morning, the secretary of the panel, I'm Dr. Glory Esien, fellow college of, uh, fellow of public health physician, consultant, public health physician and Assistant Controller General of Corrections in charge of medical and clinical services at the National Headquarters. I want to talk briefly on healthcare services as regards to the inmate that we have at the Nigerian Correctional Services. We are empowered by the Nigerian Correctional Services Act twenty nineteen that any inmate come to us as entitled to have healthcare services for the promotion, protection of physical and mental and prevention and treatment of all diseases for all our inmates in the custodial center. To achieve this, the Nigerian Correctional Services has hospital, clinics, infirmary in their custodial centers all over the nation. And we provide mostly the healthcare services at the primary healthcare level and at some centers, some custodial centers, we do have secondary level of healthcare services. We have about seventeen hospitals over the nation and we are, we have qualified health professionals. We have, we have about twenty-six doctors, medical doctors, qualified medical doctors. We have about three hundred and forty-nine, three hundred and forty-nine nurses. We have three dentists, we have pharmacies, we have public health officers, we have optometrists, we have clinical psychologists, we have medical lab scientists, lab technicians and lab technologies to provide the healthcare services in our various custodial centers. And some of the medical doctors are consultants and some are still, you know, doing their residency to get their consultant. And then if we have cases that are not within our own level to care for the inmate, we do have a trans, we can have, we have, we have referral system that we can refer them to the, maybe to secondary healthcare level and then also to the tertiary like the Cheeching Hospital for them to have a treatment at that level. Also, we also have, do have visiting consultant that can come in to see inmates also at their custodial centers. And then we also have some medical outreachers in any of the custodial centers when, as of when necessary. The inmate population, like I've said about the doctors, number of doctors that are available, nurses, we have a inmate population as of February ten twenty twenty-five, about eighty thousand eight hundred inmates all over the Federation of, uh, all over the Federation of Nigeria. And so from what we can see, we have also shortage of medical, uh, health workers for this, uh, teeming number of inmates that we have in a custodial centers. Also, it's also nice to mention that we have a drug and center and radicalization unit under the Medical and Health Services Directory. We do have that. But the Nipri farm lack, which is supposed to produce drugs to add to our own healthcare, do lack the necessary equipment and some manpower to produce this drug. The radicalization unit is a unit that take care of the boar and all those kind of things, all those kind of people to de-radicalize them. So our major challenge is, as I mentioned, this shortage of the medical staff, inadequate funding, and budgetary allocation for medical, for medical services, leading to shortages of drugs, inadequate and equipped clinics and infirmaries in our custodial centers, leading to poor clinical service delivery to the inmates. And also, some poor training and updates. Many of, many of us do not, you know, have the capacity to attend update courses and all that. So we still have some shortage or lack of capacity building in various medical field. And non-functional ambulance, in case we have referral to take this inmate to the hospital, lack of out-of-pocket expenditures for inmate treatment. When inmates go to the hospital, you know, we have to, the healthcare generally in Nigeria is out-of-pocket expenditure. You pay and receive treatment. So this also affects the inmate, because many of the hospitals that we go, we need to pay, and there is a subsidy of fund for this. Nonavailability, though the healthcare insurance scheme, national healthcare insurance scheme cover the inmates in their act, but that has not been yet to be implemented. Also, there is also a problem with, though we have recent increase in the Russian for inmates, but with the, with the how things as economic situation, these funds that are allocated to them in Russia still do not cover all of them. And so sometimes we still find people that have malnutrition in the custodial centers. So, as we are here in this panel, we beg that we should more staff, train staff, and those that are already inside can be trained, to be updated, to be useful in carrying out their, their, their job. So one more staff to be recruited. If we have about 200 and something custodial centers, and you have just less than 30 doctors, you know that that is very, very inadequate coverage in terms of medical services. And almost all the staff, almost all the health data has that kind of been shot in the. And so there should be more improved funding of the correctional services in general, which will also help in the, you know, cascade down to the healthcare delivery in the correctional service. Training and retraining of staff, I've said, cannot be overemphasized. And when we have no staff, no hospitals, and we can't, and we can't pay on our own. Like if we have a Nipri farm, they drop a manufacturing unit working, we can have drugs that we produce for our own inmates, and that may help matters as far as the healthcare delivery is concerned. And what's happening now is that we have been able to get some states to capture, because some state have the state national health insurance scheme, and we have been able to get some states to capture the inmates which are residing in their state, that are part of their state, you know, population. They've been able to capture them in their health insurance scheme. And this will go a long way to improve the health, you know, care services among the inmates. So as part of sensitization, if we can appeal to all the states that have healthcare insurance in their state to capture the inmates as vulnerable group, that will also go a long way. Even to activate the national healthcare insurance, you know, act that have already captured them as a vulnerable group, they no implementation. If we can have that, will also go a long way to improve the healthcare services of our inmates in the Nigerian correctional services. And we still stand as part of, because health, you need good nutrition, good feeding to be able to make live. If somebody is ill, the person needs to feed well. There's a saying that said, let, let, let food be your medicine, not medicine your food. If they are, if we are able to still have increase, because of how, the cost of living in Nigeria increased their ration, that will also help in improving the health services and the indices in the health services in the Nigerian correctional services. Thank you. That's the basic view. I'm open for any question or any comments.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. First of all, we want to know whether the many of your colleagues that have something additional to add, something more to mention, especially, the main focus is on these health professional associations that are there. They do not have the full, so whatever you can inform more, we will try to show some immediate photographs that we here, try and see whether that will be possible or not. But is there anybody from this side that want to add anything? You know, like, yes, including, because I haven't heard much about your mental health state, don't forget that we have, that the president of the Association of Psychiatrists in Nigeria is in this room now. We also have the National Association of Labor Psychologists represented here. So if, what if you have any issue about it, let's know if you can, because if they don't understand the problem, it will be difficult for them to know what to do, to assist, okay? Let's know. And, and even when they finish presenting, they can still be interactive. This will involve of an interactive process. But let's, when we finish hearing from you, then we will go back to the office. Every professional association I see will be presenting before the panel. The first thing we want to know is the structure of your position in terms of your reach. So for example, we can say, I have charters in each of the states of the Federation, or in each of the other governments of the Federation. You know, something like that, so that we want, because we are looking at possibilities of synergy in the partnership, because this for us is one of the big wins, this meeting. We can decide that for next week, there will be maximum coverage of health professionals across all of the 2562 or so correctional centers, with your partnership is possible. So, when you want to present, let's know what your structure looks like, and then offer what can you do to assist. This is the national call. That's exactly what's happening here. Okay, man? Thank you, Officer of the panel. Though shattered vision of our most minds, that are here to highlight on issue of standing clearly. In your operation, we have 200 and 2000s hospitals and clinics, and most of them are in Maldives. That are not, and our clinics and hospitals, we need of great help, at least to community level. Yeah, our clinics. If we visit our clinics, they are not in good shape. So we need expansion of the existing structures. We need expansion of the existing structures. And we need establishment of more clinics to take care of. Health system in Nigerian correctional services. The infirmaries we have more than the clinics in Nigerian correctional services. And the staff we have are not enough to cover up the clinics. The nurses, the health workers, we need more of them. So what we are going to expect from the government is to expand or establish up to standard hospitals, clinics in Nigerian correctional services that will serve the inmates and staff and families. What I think we may do is, we want to know the problem itself. It's possible as we tell you the problems you have, as you are going, or some flag subsolutions. But let's hear the professionals. When we finish, we'll come back to so, given what you have said, can we do X, Y, Z? And expecting also that some may join us virtually, but we'll try and, so let's first take the ones that are here in person. Yes, I quite honestly.
On my way, on my project, I was just there, I'm upset. But I tell you, standing at my room, it's a characteristic of you. I would have loved it if the Federal Ministry of Health has represented you there. But I just, I don't think they are here. We're talking about synergy. One of our, one of the problems we have, especially in terms of reference to most of the hospitals, either within the state, either state hospitals or federal, many hospitals, when you refer a patient there, they demand for payment. And just like my boss just said, we handicapped in most, I mean, in most cases, especially at the point of admission, and then you are requested to make people see before the patient is taken in. It's a challenge. And secondly, in terms of synergy too, when I was in Sokoto, we then had not gone into psychiatry. But I discovered I have a lot of cases that need the psychiatric attention and also psychological services. I approved the then CMT Dr. Haby in the, I mean, Federal Neurosevere Hospital in Korwe. Sokoto is a part of, this is part of Sokoto town. And then graciously approved that everywhere is the, also neurosevere and hospital who visit the custodial center. And they were doing that every week, everywhere is there, at no cost to the service. Three doctors get there, they are safe, and we get the drugs and all that for them. It would be very, very fine if there is that synergy, especially because of the positive of doctors.
Yeah, I think that suggestion is a very good suggestion. That is actually the tenement of this meeting. So let's wait and hear the man. And I think, if it's okay, you may probably start us off. You can come to the podium, but then, for each person coming, you announce your name, your association. Tell us a little bit about the spread of your station, and then you make the presentation. I also want to acknowledge that we are in receipt of both your electronic copy of the memorandum and the seven copies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, yeah. And I apologize for the, and my name is, of course, titled James Opinu. I am the president of the Association of Psychiatrists in Nigeria. And the association is a member of all psychiatrists within and outside the country. And there is hardly any states without psychiatrists in the country. Of course, in the course of my presentation, I will make reference to some of those, the activities that we've been carrying out in the country. Any other thing that you need to say?
No questions.
Thank you very much. We all know how those streets to be in Rwanda, but the body of mental health disorder is quite high in the country. One in four is believed to, in the course of the lifetime, will develop a mental health condition. And the number of those who are able to access care is actually less than 10%. So we have a huge gap, which we call the mental health gap, over 85, 90% of those who are not able to access, retain. The recent Japai syndrome has also affected the number of psychiatrists in the country. As we stand, we, well, I don't have the exact figure, because the figure keep on, keeps on changing. The number that we have will be led to a quality psychiatrists in the country. And that means that for every doctor, he has over a million to handle. So every psychiatrist is handling and taking care of over a billion people. And we know that even the available facilities is actually tilted towards the urban areas, that the rural areas are not as covered as most, even though most Nigerians, except over 65% Nigerians live in the rural area. But we find out that most of the psychiatric center, the federal medical centers, the specialty centers are often more barely located at the state capitals or the metro cities. The use of substances is also on the rise. And it's noted that a huge number, the individual I got presented earlier, talks about even throwing substances at all events. The use of substances in the country is quite ancient, and the body is also increasing. We have, even at the primaries, people are now using substances. So it is a huge problem, and the number of those who use substances associated with those found in correctional service is also very high. So this memorandum will highlight some of the observations of a certain psychiatrist on the issue of abuse and various defects lookable in the present forensic mental health care services. And we profile plausible recommendation in an attempt to demonstrate achievable global best practices. When we talk about abuse, we are talking about an elastic technology that captures various issues surrounding the misuse of, misuse, I mean, the application of torture and cruel or inhumane or degrading treatment of inmates in our correctional facilities. There are three areas that I will, which is where the, from what you said, obviously. Yes. At some point, we have somebody who, I know, or who used to be there, and then somebody else took over after he retired. I doubt if you have many psychiatrists present. You mentioned the clinical psychologists. I wonder how many clinical psychologists you have. You mentioned the number of doctors, mentioned the number of nurses, which of them did you mention? Or you didn't mention that you have two psychologists. How many do you have, or what? It's a big one. And if we need to handle this issue, a complement of mental health practitioners are needed in the facility. So I will divide it into three parts. Ask the president what happens. They often prolong trial process by reducing its urgency with the attendant consequence stress. Usually, some of them will take it in the process of getting them into, well, maybe trials and all that. It usually takes a longer. And quite a number of them, maybe somebody who is dependent on alcohol, in the course of that period, will become mentally, will throw a mental health condition. And so the prolonged period is. And so the prolonged period is a major one that we need to look at. Also, those coming in, there's no screening for them. There's no screening for them to know that those who are coming in, half of them are actually ill, have mental health conditions. And those who are in, in the course of saying that, how many of them develop mental health condition? So there should be a screening at entry and there should be a regular screening. Uh we don't need to wait until they they fall ill before we start looking for uh help. So pre adi- admission screening is likely driven by poor health, physical health condition. When we, when you see them, they may be uh emaciated or whatever, that's what informs uh screening for quite a number of them. So we don't have screening and poor physical health, not picked at presidently, has a significant impact on the mental health of inmates during the course of uh their imprisonment. Also, in the course of their imprisonment, we lack timely access to care for those who were mentally unwell before imprisonment. But some of them are going to go in and therefore there needs to be an as soon as possible to offer that. I must say that at least I am from Platu State. And I know that in Platu State, members of our uh members of our team, members of the uh the psychiatry, members of the in the university teaching hospital, in particular, doctor Arunia, who is on the L D of panel, he used to go there every week. Before then, doctor Aruba used to be there and while he was there, he handled what to have. And medical, meditate the drugs, the attention and all that are often given to them. Of course, I will mention some of the challenges we have in the course of them happening there. So we have a negative health care manpower, there's no psychiatrists as I said there, yeah. Few mental health nurses, if you have, I mean, no, it's a few in Platu State. And then, mental health nurses, lack of everyday training in mental health. We lack appropriate meditation exercises, mental health, it drops for them and not the pain. Lack of multidisciplinary care, even though there are psychologists within the environment of the correctional center, only a few of them have clinical rooms in which they are able to provide necessary psychological intervention to mental mentally ill inmates. Or should we transfer or severely ill, in which maybe for full bureaucracy, they usually take them a long while before they are transferred. Mark of funding, I think you mentioned it, inadequate manpower, leg coughing. In fact, as the other partner of the partner, whether whatever, I insist that nobody should be handcuffed in the water. I have a further feeling that I mean, we need to give them humane treatment. But because they lack uh the manpower, somebody will just come in, chain them to the bed and then will leave. Uh who are probably will not see him, continue to follow the, the guy will pee on the bed and probably will poop on the bed. And it is the major one, there shouldn't be any reason why there should be. Cheap. And of course, we will give uh other, other things. So prison, as I said, for those found not guilty by reason of insanity. The correctional uh environment is frequently toxic to this mentally ill, and as well as already found not, some of them, they they have, if for reasons we were, they can admit it. You may have the tenure also, you may have a primary health care, but there is a need. If not, or in all the region, there must be one at least around that they can send them so that you can give them adequate care. And so, however, there are no security or forensic officers in Nigeria, the only concern of care, the dangers of coming there is the prison. So they just keep them there. So what happens, they go to imprisonment. What are the plans, what are the indictments for them after they leave uh the uh the correctional center? So this is lacking. There must be mental health uh plan for parole procedures and continuity of mental health care. Other form of abuses that we found, locking up of mentally ill all day and keeping them in isolation in the facilities, the essential draws for care of the mentally ill are sometimes lacking and the medication administration is absent. Most of the time, what we found is that they found a uh, they called them, one of the inmates who is uh, I don't know what they, what they, what they call them, kind of, are the provosts. They find the provost and the provost is giving the drug, provost will start at the time of the day. And the provost will have the prerogative to decide whether he gives it to the guy. Of course, we negotiate what what to give. That shouldn't be, we must find a way of uh discovering that. The death of a caregiver could not be seen as a form, I mean, could actually be seen as a form of abuse, as identification, treatment and follow is matter. If we can identify those who are here before coming in, identify those who fall ill in the course of, it's cause of being there. And then give it them adequate attention program also, then we may say that we actually have views in there. When the mentally ill are officially transferred to psychiatric school for observation and reporting, there are problems with treatment of some of these, or charges you said. But the good news is that at least presently, the government is operating a forty-eight hour free. Presently, so I'm sure the correctional facilities will be able to make use of that. Within the forty-eight hours, they can be given treatment even without money. Or you are able to arrange, after within forty-eight hours, you should be able to arrange for uh money for them. We should also discover a treatment offering or trading of inmates to the bed. Sometimes when the patients are to be moved somewhere for tests, the relatives are expected to follow the prison vehicle. Uh they are also expected to pay out of pocket, you also mentioned it for uh there for the investigations that are needed. So what are the recommendations? We need to improve funding, which is confirming what you said, uh funding of mental health care in international correction. We talked about the better relationship to the correctional center, which is, which will be increased, which will go down to the best facility. And also, what if we don't have a focus on mental health care? Mental health care, I didn't mention other, 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 other members of the team. We work as a team, psychiatrists, clinical psychologists, uh the the mental health nurses, the social worker must be there. Uh operational therapists must also be there, all of them work together to give holistic care to the inmates. So treatment of the mental health uh manpower, training of the, of the, as I said, the gap is quite large. We need to train other people for mental health. And then there is, the Ministry of Health is actually going through a process of uh training. People uh who are uh laymen and women or women in person on mental health. And the English office, the mental health uh training man or mental health staff for people who are there in nurses, women in person. So they can identify uh people who are ill, and then they can screen them, that's short, screening instruments that they may use. So better planning of mental health services, which is focused on delivering quality care in correctional centers. Consider developing health means in the correctional facility where mentally ill can be admitted and treated. If you have a hostage, as you said, there's nothing stopping us from having a session for mentally, even if it's a ten, a ten, for mentally ill. And then somebody who's a a train should be in charge to be able to do that. Optimize medication supply, uh the stock of medications should be lead based rather than work coaches of a few types of individuals. It's found that some of the people at the time, you don't try to find the negative, you know, and then you all get that. In fact, there is something I said, if you don't have that, if you don't have programs in, you can't even handle someone who is activated, someone who is destroyed. And then you are applying some acetylchones that they may not even use and then the inventory will expire on you. So full implementation of the national correctional service has got to do with it, you are due, you are due to do it. Your key aspect of the national uh correctional service that's relevant to the mental health care delivery are captured in the following document. The National Correctional Services twenty twenty-two, that is, that you will operation protocol and guideline for managing inmates with mental illness within the criminal justice system. Um we need to look at, to ensure that the mental health review boards for each state are established and functioning. I know that there was a preview that they established the board. I was told that the board that I met, I don't, this is inauguration. We need to ensure that the state parole board that have been set up also become very active. So in conclusion, the ongoing independent investigation panel on the alleged corruption, abuse of power, torture, and inmates within the mental, the national correctional facility is a step in the right direction. We are also interested in that cooperation to the uh primary setting for certain of this. It attests to the genuine concern of the current administration to own birth or the anomalies of the correctional facilities and their services with a view to a total overhaul of the system. We need to engage relevant official bodies, the N G U and the C S U and relevant agencies of government in this high-power investigative panel. And then which will ensure our surely help in positioning the correctional services to international standard. And the best practices will bring the needed commendation to the current administration. And senior psychiatrists in Nigeria will be very much interested in full report of the investigation. And then our members are fully committed to the final action of the recommendation. We shall remain a valuable ally in the progress towards the full reform and implementation of the recommendation on this critical part of the correctional service. Thank you, Dr. Opinu, for the opportunity and that uh we will work in synergy with uh the house. Want to add, I'm assuming that even the secretary of the committee are getting uh in 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 communication with us with the reservation even called from Ibu. And then we are able to make that great, because somebody, uh one of our colleagues who was in the teaching hospital to be there. And the way we work in uh assured, the maybe that now was also in separate, we are doing something uh to us. You can actually have a a cooperation with the teaching hospital and they can have the way. Doctor Longa, I don't know if you have anything else about this.
Another, uh that's, that will be good, but as soon as you finish, we want to, I want to, I want to make a serious point. But you can come in, maybe if profit from it still around. But just introduce yourself so that everybody will know.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ushara, if you will, I'm done. I was uh recently the head of psychiatry at the National Hospital of Abuja. I'm the past executive of A P M. I thank my president for the opportunity to join you. I would be very, if I have three, three issues I thought that we should highlight. Number one is that I think that part of the problem with provision of health services in the correctional services is that the health services, the correctional services have been, also recently, before they are the new act, it's still on the exclusive legislative basis, which is everything is better. So whether the prison is a, how about color the border is under the fair. Now that it has been placed uh by other the uh uh concurrent, has that been implemented and what has been done in order? Because I think the burden is a lot. And I think that it will be pertinent in order to get to the root of the problems they are trying to solve to actually unbundle the correctional services and get more uh concurrent legislation. I say this because mental health care in Lagos state is not, is not at the same level as in many states. So it will probably be that if we let the states and some states to do better. So number two is that I also would like to be interested to know whether the correctional services are connected to the national primary health care development in justice. Because if they are, they should be able to operate the border whereby a standard primary health care uh center is provided in every facility and that will take care of a lot of their problems. Because there are protocols of managing, many of the uh conditions will come across, even in the absence of doctors. And from the figures we have, they are obviously totally lacking in manpower. And the third point I'd like to talk about is that substance abuse is a very serious issue in the prisons. I know it from practical example, uh experience. And I think it's very important to look at it, not just from um trying to catch people who bring drugs in, but also do they have programs to inform people about substance abuse and their drug demand reduction uh programs available in the prisons? These are things that I think that the services might want to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, um thank you, Prof. Thank you, Doc, uh thank you very much. And thanks for your consistency in on many of the platforms when we discuss issues around access to justice and mental health. Thank you, my God bless you. And I'm also very happy that you are not too far away from here. Thank you. Uh Prof, I didn't know of ask specifically because part of what we are looking at in this panel is implementation. Not too much English have you spoken over the years. There are things we can do within our own set of influence. We try to entertain on this level, just mentioning it. We got into worrying custodial center and we found that it's a big problem. You know, within Ibu state, custodial centers are not even once into doctor at this moment. Uh they give you the statistics of how many doctors that they have, um not to talk about psychiatrists. And not to talk about the, the recent challenges in terms of the quality of psychiatrists, psychiatrists themselves. You didn't mention that you have just about two hundred and fifty psychiatrists all over the country, including my dear doctor. But um on a more serious note, we would like to have very clear commitment in terms of what services and care can be provided from your station there. You have members of all states, even if that is, if it can be one, if it's once in the 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 week, twice in a month, once, I don't know, but then just to say that whatever, if we say that this is it, even if you just play the oversight. Once we also look at other, because I think this we also, we are going to also discussing, we are not that professional and such. But is it possible that we can at least have some commitment? And then it's, we don't clear that this is what the association of psychiatrists in Nigeria is promising the Nigerian correctional services. And Ni- and Nigerians, you know, because you know the Nigerian Association have a program that they call Pro Bonus Services. We have been way canceled, but Nigerian Foundation members make a commitment. As a matter of fact, for our word of senior advocate of Nigeriaism, some of, one of the criteria is how many pro bonus services you are ready to provide. So the ones that do this, it would also be good that we need to have a way to acknowledge that this is the kind of contribution they are making. I think it was the only woman yesterday here, standing where, standing, spoke about the importance of ensuring that the 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 weakest is supported. So again, what can we promise Nigeria?
Just uh let this happen, uh our careful search.
It's not. It's good to say, it's just, it would, it just reminded me of something. There are some videos that will be shown, some pictures. And very shortly, once that is done, he will, he will run some commentary while that video is going on. Once that is done, he will tell us with the same question. And then so he can understand both yourself and those who are going to speak after him, can understand how desperate the situation is. And so it's just for you to think about, please take a chance.
These are people who we met and some inmates. And they are going through what the doctor described as Western. described as wasting. The whole of their, what is just left in them is the skin covering their bones. And some of them were even the doctors, were trying to contribute money by themselves to augment their feeling, to see whether that will recover. Many of them are dead. And the particular facility we found is, the death toll in that facility is quite much. You can see them. There are many, not one, not two, we just tried to show a few of the pictures. Apart from the wasting, there are other complications, health complications with them. You can see some of them with hyena and others. So this, these ones, you also see the skin rashes with the hyena, with the wasting and other complications that we can maybe talk about. Go on, please, there are more. This particular issue, there are more than forty in a particular correctional service. Now, that is just on that. The pictures of the people that we met with mental health and then we decided not to take them because they were really looking bad. And one of the things we observed is like what you just said in your presentation. The pre-admission assessment of inmates were not there. Some that have tuberculosis, for example, were discovered months after they had been in the custody. So you can imagine if there is pre-admission assessment, we would have been able to prevent infecting others. Even as we speak, when we asked them, they did mention that the challenge is that there's no money to do assessment. There's always some organizations like your own organization, when they come around and decide to do assessment, that they will present those who are showing signs. So it means that those who are not showing signs may not be freely assessed. They will be, and there are some places we found that the only assessment for some of these are highly contagious diseases.
So you can see, go back to the one with the head.
Hmm, so. The fellow inmates did this. And if you also check closely, there is no proper medication beyond Benke. Because most of them said that, of course, yes, some staff. So what they get most there is just pharmacy. They said, no matter what you complain about, and it's not as if that medical staff do not want to help them, but it's also about this is condition of medicine. Some, this is the maximum condition. Some issue, the containers you are seeing, we discovered that what was in the containers were not more than, remaining were not more than three, four tablets. So, and how do they get their supplies? Most of them are not. So this is the bed in one of the sick beds where the admits people. This is one of them. So you can see this. And the challenge is that some of them have been with this for not just one week, for months, for years. And some I asked, they said they are getting treatment. What we say is the treatment working? And they say no, which means they are not getting the right treatment. And I'm sure when associations like yours get involved, the more we have, the better things we come. We also, let me talk about the, one of the things we saw about the mental health, for the fact that you are speaking about mental health now. Some of these complications you are seeing, some of these things you are seeing was simply because there was no proper medication at the right time. Now, for the mental health, we went to a particular cell where they were only three, the lady had mental health issue. They had two cells and two big cells. They separated that lady, the one that had mental health. I can't say because it's disturbing the other people, which is okay, you know. But the cell they put her was like a hole from here to this place and she's only known to herself, not attended to. And we observed that any time she would come, the much they would do is to change her, which is also for us from the very man point of view, instead of killing herself or destroying other, other people or property. So for the truth is that when professionals are involved, we get better service. Because the question we asked was, when did they observe that she had mental health issue? They said it was about a week or two after she came in. It's okay. How long has she stayed? She stayed close to a year. We said, has she seen a mental health professional? And they said, no. Why? Both the officers and everybody around is worried because they don't have, and that particular facility is only a nurse. And that facility has over six or seven hundred inmates, not even a medical doctor. The medical doctor visits from another facility. So it's a very, very desperate situation that if we are waiting for government to do everything, we're not going to leave government, to that holding government accountable. Of course, government must do what they should do. But what we are looking for is, with the understanding of the very difficult situations that we're going to, and we're talking about women because not property, and for what you know about health, there are points that you leave health challenges to, if the generous to become a recovery. For a little intervention that is timely can recover itself, that situation. So, and when you now mentioned the fact that even the professionals at your level are far below the capacity we are looking for, I just don't know from which angle, so you can start, please.
Well, thank you very much for showing this lovely picture of inmates. As I said, in my, one, pre, before they get into the prisons, some of them they are having an issue. While in the, because of the environment, there is whatever.
Post-trauma stress.
They are actually precipitated by that. Those who are, who are prone to developing mental health conditions, when they get inside them, the conditions, the environment, the nutrition and all that can actually push them to develop it. And we, I can assure you that we need, your physicist, the government must play a part, his part effectively, by increasing education to those areas, making sure that there are some things are doing. But as the professional body, we are saying that we are ready, I mean, and not to show that any of facilities where we go to, and any, any, any funding was actually given to anybody. No, services are actively being overruled. Yes, this is more than asking there. And like us to do this in the most captured way. I know you've already promised, you already have started to do, because you gave one member of the A P M to support a partnership we decided to institute in the Oire Custodial Center, following things on the business. But what we are trying to have is some commitment that says for this month, in every of the states, because I, you know, there are not too many. So even if it is one person per state and the person commits that once a, two weeks, once a, one, but whatever it is, we need to make sure it is constant, it will happen. So we just need something like that. If they say we can come once a week, maybe too much, whatever, if they say once a week, whatever it is, let me sure.
You are four hours a week.
Yeah, let me sure. Let me sure that there is an A P M structured intervention that will tell us for each of the states of the Federation, this is the person, this is the number of persons, and this is the frequency the person is committing to. Then we will have another process. But I will not be able to give.
No, but you can. What you work on on that.
These can be worked on. And now maybe the correctional facilities, maybe to write to the association.
To the A P M.
The A P M and the association requesting all they wanted. And then we, I can assure you that we will get at least one or two who are interested.
Okay, so maybe to make it less bureaucratic, I know that the members of the A P M are members of the mental health review board as well as, I think, where possible, members of the parste paro board. Because the A P M at that time submitted a list of its members representing each state. So if it is possible that you can internally check and get a commitment for each of the states who will be another, then we can follow up. Because as I said, it will not be only the psychiatrists, but this is really what we are pushing on, to make sure that there is a commitment. This one is a low-end food. This one is not about funding from government. This is just like a voluntary study to be very minimum that can be offered by the professional association, just like the Nigerian Association is already giving in terms of pro bonos services. But thank you who will come back on that, but check it internally to see who will be ready and then we can discuss what, how can those people also be acknowledged? You know, whether, you know, whatever, even as an association, you can give what to those who are doing this pro bonos service.
What I will assure you that we will do our best, as we are doing and even more, get people to the centers and also finding the reach of those who are sincerely, you know, admitted, they will need to be taken for care. And I will also avoid like that, you know, the single speaking.
Yeah, yeah, the point you made around this is really important, but that's part of what we would also come back to the if, because we are going to hear everyone and then we look at general recommendations. So please, when you come, so that we don't take this much time, if you tell us, after that, tell us what you're committing to and you already know what we're looking forward to having. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. See, see, they are clapping for you. Of course, of course, in this Nigerian correctional service team, they are clapping. So which other professional association, Association of Clinical Psychologists? Thank you.
Distinguished guests, Honorable Chairperson in our absence, Dr. Maklin Ajani, Food and Health Secretary of the Ministry of Interior, Final Secretary, Dr. Uju Agbonge, our own person, and honourable members, Alaji Nasar Osman, Dr. Iker Chikulwe in his absence, and honourable stakeholders, I am Dr. Abigail.
My name is.
My colleague is that. I am Dr. Abigail Uni, a licensed clinical psychologist, a trauma specialist and inner child healing therapist. I, I am here with my colleague, Dr. Simon Jubel. We are representing the Nigerian Clinical Association today. And a lot has been said and I'm trying my best not to repeat some things, but do bear with me because from the clinical perspective, some things will differ. Today, our thematic focus is on mental health service delivery in Nigerian correctional service. And we're trying to explore this critical topic because it is essential to recognize the importance of not only integrating mental health care into the correctional system, but ensuring that they are properly implemented. So we are more focused on implementation. And we are hoping that we can adopt a trauma-informed rehabilitation-focused perspective in order to reduce residivism, improve behavior and support a long-term reintegration into the society. So from a clinical perspective, I'll just outline how this can be achieved, drawing from evidence-based practices and research. We're hoping that a comprehensive mental health screening can be done, just like Professor has already said. But we are more focused on the fact that when these inmates come in, we are going to screen them to identify conditions such as their trauma history, which is very, very important. Trauma history helps us to understand where they are coming from and helps us to understand the kind of care we are going to provide for them and of course substance use disorder. And we are also hoping that there will be ongoing assessment, not just a pre-assessment, but ongoing assessment occasionally to check using different screening tools to assess the level of their mental health conditions. And implement routine mental health checkings to assess changes in the inmate's emotional and psychological well-being. We are also hoping that the use of standardized screening tools for P T S D, depression, anxiety, personality disorders and suicidal orientation are being administered to these inmates. Also, we are hoping that there will be a trauma-informed and evidence-based therapy that is being provided periodically at the custodial centers. Very, very important because when we offer cognitive behavioral therapy for anger management, for instance, emotional regulation and cognitive restructuring, it goes a long way to help these inmates for their rehabilitation. And most of these therapies, they are time-based. For example, for C B T, within twelve weeks, it can be achieved. So if we have maybe mental health nurses and other mental health professionals that have been trained or been trained on how they can use this time-based international tools, they will be able to achieve a lot of things within a short period of time. To provide trauma-focused therapy like T F C B T, E N D R for inmates with histories of childhood trauma and abuse or P T S D. Integrate group therapy sessions focused on rehabilitation in these custodial centers where we can also teach them emotional regulation and coping strategies. Offer substance abuse counseling and dual diagnosis for inmates with concurring disorders. Also, society prevention and crisis intervention to train correctional staff to recognize warning signs of suicide, psychosis or self-care. Most of the time, if you're able to identify these signs, you're able to cope the issues. It wouldn't escalate to the point where the inmate will self-care or put further. And of course, establish twenty-four-seven crisis intervention teams using the suicide prevention to support. Implement solitary confinement alternatives for mentally ill inmates. Isolating them can actually worsen psychiatric symptoms. And when we're looking at those images that are quite blurry, it really touched my heart as a mother. And I'm thinking, these are people's, you know, sons, right? Yes, they're coming to the crime, but the punishment and what they are going through at the facility is even far worse than, you know, the punishment method of them by the system, right? So it's not commensurate. We are hoping that addressing corruption and the psychological impact will also help. Now, we've heard a lot of allegations at the beginning of this hearing. And from our point of view, we are proposing standard punishment for corrupt officers. Strict disciplinary action should be enforced for officers engaging in corruption, ensuring zero tolerance for misconduct. However, when allegations are false, the mental health impact on wrongly accused officers should not be ignored. So we are hoping that at the, at the end of everything, the investigation, any of the officers that are found not to be guilty, their mental health will also be looked into. Public humiliation, career loss and psychological distress as a result of this can also lead to depression, P T S D or societal orientation. So we might fix having those issues to look at much later on with a limited manpower. If a investigation should be in place to ensure that officers are not punished unjustly as false accusations and rumors can create a toxic work environment and fear-based leadership impact on other officers. When officers are, see colleagues as being harshly punished, whether they are guilty Whether they are guilty or not, it creates fear, stress and resentment. The stigma of being associated with corrupt behavior, even through rumors, can lead to social isolation, anxiety and burnout among officers. A psychologically unsafe work environment increases mistrust, workplace conflict and emotional exhaustion, affecting job performance and decision-making. Inadequate staff welfare provisions can also have a detrimental impact on the staff's mental well-being. So we are dealing with a multifaceted issue because if they are understaffed, then it's also detrimental to their well-being because you have a greater number of people carrying out more responsibilities. Furthermore, understaffing can disrupt the smooth operation of duties, creating vulnerabilities in the correctional service environment that can be exploited for illicit activities like, such as drug trafficking and the likes. How does this impact the inmates' mental health? Corrupt officers contribute to inmates' abuse, extortion, manipulation, worsening the psychological distress of inmates. Inmate witnessing corrupt behavior without accountability may feel hopeless, distrustful and resistant to rehabilitation. Conversely, if officers are unfairly punished based on rumors, it also creates an environment of fear and unpredictability, further destabilizing inmates who already struggle with mental health challenges. These are the solutions that we are professing. Um, transparency, fair investigation and due process, which is crucial in maintaining institutional integrity without harming mental well-being. Psychoeducation and rehabilitation programs as well. Conduct mental health workshops to help inmates understand their conditions and give a lot of help in coping strategies. Implement rehabilitation programs such as art therapy, vocational training and meditation practices to promote self-expression and emotional healing. Encourage family therapy at these custodial centers and re-integration programs to reduce social connections before release. At the policy level, we are hoping for systemic changes. If there's an establishment of mental health courts for diversion programs that provide treatment instead of incarceration for offenders with mental illnesses. Increase funding, like everyone has said, for mental health professionals in correctional facilities while ensuring judicial use of these funds. Develop mental health, specialized mental health units within prisons for high-risk inmates who need intensive psychiatric care. As clinical psychologists from the Nigerian Clinical Association, we have chapters in all the states of the Federation with over eight hundred members. And we've been working very hard to train and retrain clinical psychologists in the correctional facilities and we're still open to doing much more. We are offering our services at a voluntary level whenever it is needed. We always show up and we make sure that the services that we render, they are adequate, they are professional and will have reports that can be shared across the different stakeholders. So that's what we're offering today. And we're hoping that as we contribute our quota towards improving behavioral outcomes that reduces prison violence, enhances rehabilitation efforts, decrease repeat of offenses while promoting human rights and ensuring ethical treatment of inmates and support correctional officers' mental health, that there will be an improvement in the workplace for efficient service delivery. So, Honorable Secretary, we have always been working together and we're hoping that whenever we are needed, we are still going to be available.
Thank you very much. So on that last word, whenever we are needed, you are needed now. So it's not whenever, it's already a standard thing. So I want to thank the National Association of Clinical Psychologists um, for your very comprehensive presentation. Um, we are also taking notice some of the commitments that was made in the II State at the conference. And on the strength of that, um, what we want to be, because there are some psychologists in the Nigerian Correctional Service, there are no many. And they, uh, many of them actually more or less first-hand, maybe detailed, firstly psychologists. So you know that they need a lot of capacity to be able to deliver the full-fledged of psychological services. So on the first, my first comment, and I think when I finish, I'll go to the chair. And the Director of Services may have some questions or comments regarding your presentation. The first is to let you know that not everyone who is in correctional centers are criminals. There are also innocent people. They are also very minor offenders and people not to blame. So it's important that we understand that about these three categories. So when we are providing services, beyond that, remind there are some of the people who will be providing services who that are truly innocent. Of course, there are some who are highly offenders, there are some who are really serious offenders. The Nigerian Correctional Service has two types of officially designated categorization of those who have mental illness. The first is those we call the criminal unaties and another categorization that is called the civil unaties. And simply speaking, the criminal unaties are those who have mental illnesses. Of course, there are some criminal charges, criminal offenses attached to them. You know, so maybe the president said that you have killed, but however, they think that is a question of insanity. The second regarding the civil unaties are many of the times people who are held there on so-called preventive detention. So there is no criminal charge attached to them. Many of the states, as you may be well aware, are operating under a lunacy laws that are very, very acute. With the mental health acts, now perhaps there may be some more things we can try to achieve. Um, the President of the Association of Clinical Psychiatrists in Nigeria did mention about setting positions in the acts and about a particular protocol that I actually that we may also leverage on. So before we leave, I will probably bring our attention to section twenty-four of the Nigerian Correctional Services Act to mention what the law has already provided. So that in this meeting, we'll be thinking of how do we actualize this. On the twenty-second of August, no, twenty-fifth of August, two thousand and twenty-two, the state's mental health review boards were inaugurated. But you are correct, um, as we heard from the President of the APM, that that cannot be fully activated. So the first is to say about this generally. The second point is, well, the panel is very happy, um, with the fact that you saw the big picture. You understand, from your presentation, it's very clear that psychological intervention after the provision of psychological services is not only for people, it's also for the staff. Now, for the staff, and that is every staff, because we've heard it over and over, that they are worked, they are fewer staff, they are working under very difficult circumstances. We had that this morning, that even those who do, uh, NID are more stressed and all the rest of that. So you also made a lot of focus around what this process, and I think it's very important that we recommend, what this process of investigation into will. Will it also be managed well? So which means that if someone was found to be innocent, you need to also be given very visible process to make sure that this information have found that this person is innocent. And to be honest with you, the panel told that part in the first report of the panel, which was clearly requesting whether there is some persons who stayed outside the custodial center even after the person had been sentenced to those custodial centers. It was a very publicly visited, combined sensational news regarding what risked whether he actually slept in the custodial center. The first report of the panel was very clear on this matter, that every information we had we documented tensions that could not be forged. At least that as what we have at the moment, we are writing that report, showed that he stayed in the custodial center, he did not sleep outside. However, there were privileges to be observed, which the panel in his report highlighted. So I'm just saying this to show you as an example, that anything that we find to be wrong, we will also say it is wrong, what is right, we say it is also right. We rest assured that the members of this panel are people of proven integrity and clarity on this matter. So you did mention that part. So the question which is a final thing is, the National Association of Clinical Psychologists, what are you offering? You, you know, if we speak in the air and say we will be there to provide services, it's not so short. Eight hundred persons, that is quite good. So, and there is the one about direct delivery of the science. There is another about oversight of what others who may not have been that fully contacted, that can be. There is also about the initial capacity building. Regarding the initial capacity building, there would be some structure which I hope are type information here, which would really bring in the psychologists and all the including nurses, you know, to be able to create awareness around, and this was basically the discussion that held in the meeting, the listed. So that will continue because it was important to bring down level of capacity in what there and at the various, at, at training institutions of Nigerian Correctional Services. But for this one, please, what can you offer? You have members in all the states, even those members in the states, because most of the time at the state capital, you will have a very big facility, but you may also see facilities outside the state capital. What can you commit to this? Uh, if you can do this now, we will be very much interested because this is really what we are wanting to have. Um, I was in one, I was in one of the facilities last week that had never done any psychiatric screening, psychological screening for anybody. The person that was there, no, Scotty who had the capacity to do it, no, nobody knew what it is. So again, that should tell you how there is, so all of the beautiful things you said is more wonderful. But how can you get the Nigerian Correctional Services problem to provide some of this? That's, thank you.
Okay, um, we've done a lot, I would keep on doing, but specifically, I will be speaking for, I will be speaking for my president when I say that. We are looking into running our members in all the state chapters to see that as part of the requirement for licensure, you're going to carry out some program services. So we are running our members to ensure that this is done, which means the program services you won't be offering at the correctional centers. That's one of it. And then two, we are also going to provide at a very basic level, psychosocial support, we call it PSS, to make sure that every staff of the correctional centers, they are being trained to offer psychological first aid. At the basic level, anybody can do that. It wouldn't take up to three days' training to be quick on how to do that. So if everyone can do that, starting from the entry point, whatever is your position, you're able to offer psychological support or psychological first aid. You've greatly reduced the burden of, uh, understaffing. You've reduced that. That's two. And then number three, of course, we have a lot of professionals here in the FCT. I, my colleague, and all the others. I'm a trauma specialist, we're just discussing before I came up to speak, who also personally render our services and try how to rotate to go and give them a comprehensive trauma assessment. Because we don't have so many trauma specialists around. These are things that we have suggested we move, but we are also going to give it as a recommendation to the association.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think the point about making this as a condition for licensing is awesome. And I saw part of the things that we were agreed in the meeting, that is, so which is good. Yeah, so all of the things you said, that's, so the package and recommendation that came out from our meeting conference, that we would have, because once this is recognized, this can happen anywhere. But the specific one thing that is lacking is, will there be a designated member of the National Association of Clinical Psychologists in every state that can say is, the person is in charge of coordinating the program services of the Nigerian clinicals, uh, uh, National Clinical Psychologist Association? If, if, is even if you can answer that, because this is what you can tell the president, I will support to follow up on this. You just said the same thing you talked to the associations psychiatrists in Nigeria. So that we know who is where, so it's a tale, we say, this person is this person, this person is this place. We will also share with all the members of the state parole board and members of the mental, state mental health board, review board, that you have members, because the National Association of Clinical Psychologists submitted members, but I don't know, some of your members have departed, they have gone. So you need to update, you share the list with them so that you can say who you are recommending to replace so that that can be sent to the correctional service, uh, the controller general to be able to know so that we have, because some of the committees, your members are no, no longer there, I mean. So I think we need to put that, but please, if it's possible to just add, because there has to be people who are willing, who are interested, because one association which I will not mention, that is not, not neither of you, but I will not mention the name of the association. The person that will, which I said, I don't like getting in correctional center, I will not come there, I will say, please, ma'am, is anybody in your association who might come in? So please be sure those persons really would like to come, those who are interested in this, you know, that will be nice.
Can I respond?
Oh, okay, is, I will respond.
You know, as clinical psychologists, we know where the service demand, it's part of our training. So we go where there is a need for us to go and we all know that as clinicians. So we are ahead of you, our president is making sure that for each of the state chapters, we are going to have representative focal point representatives who would be the ones to coordinate for each of these.
Yes, so the point is, that, that is, we need to know who does and their contacts. So that the correctional side is including the state controllers, including the charities of the correctional centers, including where there exists, whoever is a psychologist in that correctional center, who know? Who is, can I call in terms of a problem? And thank you, thank you.
Okay, I just want to, yes, ma'am? I just want to thank you especially for being ahead of us. Like you said, it's important to what, after food, the most important thing I discovered that is required in correctional service facilities is your service. You know, I wouldn't be the one talking about complex post-traumatic disorder. And it's more with people that work within the system and people that have brought into, um, even those who just have no history, nothing at all, for the fact that they were brought into where they never expected or wanted. So we live in need of from your association and from the psychiatric association. So we thank you seriously for your coming and for what you're already doing ahead. Uh, let us see how we can be able to build it into a framework that can become something reliable. And by the time we finish with the model, you may be surprised about that African countries who begin to reach out to both the correctional services and the association to follow that template. That's just what I want to say. Thank you so much.
Okay, just, just, because I know that mental health, we are just finishing it. I want to, just for the purpose of both the people here and those who are online, to mention the provision of the Nigerian Correctional Services in terms of mental health. And then we begin to hear the other health professionals. Um, section twenty-four, thank you very much. Please don't go because there may be some questions and thank you. Please don't go because there may be some questions, and thank you very much. They are, are they, the correctional service manager, you have a question for me? Oh, please, please, uh, we have, we have, we have, there is a question from the correctional service for the national. Why, it's look at what she's doing to her head. Why, yes, sir, you want to come out, are you okay there?
I'm giving you the floor. I'm Dr. Ibrahim Waddeis, Direktivator of the Association of Medical. Uh, I want to, uh, pose a question in another dimension. Uh, one of the, uh, main mandate in the, uh, twenty nineteen Correctional Act is, uh, uh, the mandate for the service to also rehabilitate, uh, reform persons associated with terrorist group. And, um, of course, um, we started the programme in twenty fifteen in the correctional service, the direct correction programme. One of the key component is, uh, uh, in our team, uh, clinical psychologists. And this are very essential personnel for the issue of direct correction. So I want to, as a social group, to also look at that dimension, because I will say, uh, there is a need for clinical psychologists in a situation with such programme. And I want you to look at how your organization will be able to partner with the programme, uh, in legal services on this matter. And secondly, um, whether I like it or not, one day, most of these persons charged on the terrorist act will go back to their communities. And then one of the things that I noticed is that it's very difficult, uh, they go all over the world to prosecute, so let's go to prosecute terrorist case. You might have, um, because it's not easy to gather evidences. So another thing is, um, in the committee, we also look at, uh, civil society organization that mostly based in the community, they understand the community, and they can help us in linking, uh, linking, uh, persons to be released on that terrorist charges back to the community. And also social workers, so these are essential personnel that are actually be there for this, uh, kind of service, the correctional service providing. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, yes ma'am.
Good morning, the secretary of the committee. I am Benua Laba, and I'm a clinical psychologist with the headquarters. I must commend my colleagues for their presentation. And I also want to bring to their notice that we in the correctional service, we are now resting on our house to provide the services as much as we can. And I want to make it known to this committee that out of the sixty psychologists that were last recruited as at two thousand and two, two thousand and two was when they recruited the last set of psychologists. The service was actually looking for clinical psychologists, but at that time, most of those who were clinical psychologists were already established somewhere else, and wouldn't like to come and take a fresh appointment somewhere. So basically, most of us that came in had a first degree. And were trained, um, there was a collaboration between the Nigerian Correctional Service and the psychiatric hospitals, uh, in the country then, based on the location of those sixty persons, were given a one-year internship training in clinical setting. This helped us to be able to identify people who had psychological problems and then also provide some, uh, solutions or treatment to the barest minimum. I want to tell you that that's the last training that we have had officially. And out of these sixty, we have forty-two left in the service. Most people have looked for green and pastures and have moved on, just like any other specialty. We have people who came in with a degree in psychology and some have acquired degrees in psychology that are in the system. I also want to let the panel know that as at Monday, there was a call by the Controller General Corrections for all persons who have training in psychology. I think this is to help to increase the manpower. And I will appreciate if, uh, the Nigerian Association of Clinical Psychologists, just like we have said, partner with us in terms of capacity building. And also, one of the challenges that we have had in recent time is the, is the challenge of having, um, an established, um, a protocol of handling, handling, uh, persons we see. So, clearly, I'm, I'm, I'm here in Apujara, I'm doing my thing. Somebody is, uh, in, in the southwest is doing her thing. So that issue of supervision as on what should be a standard is very important. And I also want to let you know that the location of this specialist, the northern part, as is, not west, not east, is lacking, even in the professional body. The eight hundred persons you're talking about, you can't see them in north east or not west. And when it, you can't say, uh, mental health is restricted to a particular zone. So I don't know how we are going to into that to see, even if we are going to partner, to be able to provide services for people who are found in these areas, thank you.
Thank, thank you very, very much. To, to, it's very good that you're saying, um, what you have mentioned, and I think it's simply the point of the C G about the number of psychologists and the start that many of them have left from what were before. The intention that we're told that the neuropsychiatric hospital is a good one, is something that needs to be, um, continued. As a matter of fact, the psychologist I saw had actually done his, uh, internship at the neuropsychiatric hospital Hala Bar with the late, uh, doctor of my husband, Mike, Dr. Mike Ebu. But I was surprised he still didn't, you know, there were still some gaps, so which means his training has to be sustained. So I think that's a very good thing. You did mention about protocol, the protocol has been developed. And this protocol was developed in partnership with the team of, um, Nigerian Correctional Service and members of the Association of Psychologists, and that is including the, the federal, uh, uh, federal house, the, yesterday, uh. And this protocol was supposed to have been signed by the last C G, and I think perhaps what we need to do is that we need to bring that same protocol to the attention of the core city. I don't know whether I guess you gave it to the service, they're all of us, so we don't know. It would be good to have the honourable minister also present that protocol. In addition to this, the, and the support for that process, including a workshop that happened was supported by international ideas, and yet had promised that they will be happy to do some programming around building the capacity of, um, some of the staff around this issue. So just, I'll just mention this, that in the text of the protocol, there is already a protocol, but if you have something that people are not aware and are going to lose, it's a challenge. So I think it is important that this, and I can give you the, um, soft copy of that protocol before you leave. I think it's important, and including the letter that was granted at the C G's signature that was. So I think this is really, really important, and thank you for a lot of the highlighting things that you have mentioned. This call that the C G made, I think is a good thing, because there may be some people who did not come in that way in twenty twenty-two, but they have this specialization. It will also be good to know those who have now acquired the further degrees in psychology, because they can be the leads to be able to provide additional oversight. So please, uh, that will be important, and I think maybe before you leave, we can have some further discussion around this. Um, Association of Clinical Psychologists, I hope you are not even as mad. Okay, so I'm, I'm set, regardless of, does anyone else want to say something? Okay, for the purpose of, uh, those who are here and those who are listening to us, and then we have a many of those persons. Um, one of the persons that we have here is Dr. Yudu Madyaranwa, the founder of Just, Just Can, based in Canada. And I think she has only indicated that she would also like to make a presentation. Uh, I hope that is the case, but let's first finish here with people there. And then we hear her suggestion, because she's speaking about elements whereby electronically, we can be able to see whatever it is that they have, possibly to see how we can just fit in whatever the other is this. So, uh, Dr. Yudu, um, please, we, I noticed that you are still here. So we'll hear the others, and there are, know there are many others that have sent, there are submissions that are also online. But if you may allow me, because the mental health team have just finished, let's quickly mention what is in section twenty-four, so that we know it, then we go to the other, uh, health of, of the, um, the health professionals. Section twenty-four of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act of twenty nineteen stays as follows. Where it appears that the superintendent that, where it appears to the superintendent, that is, the superintendent is the person in charge of the correction centre, what used to be called research. Where it appears to the superintendent that an inmate undergoing imprisonment or under sentence of death is of concerned mind, we shall report, each, shall report a matter to the state controller of correctional service, who shall appoint two or more qualified health practitioners with precise mental health qualifications, one of whom shall be a correctional centre health practitioner to acquire into the inmate state of mental health. B, may, if be necessary, order the removal of the inmate from the custodial centre to another custodial centre within the state or to the closest mental health centre we are practicing, or any other hospital for appropriate treatment and care. And C, where an order is required to remove the inmate to a custodial centre outside the jurisdiction of the state controller of correctional service. It shall make a report to the zona coordinator or the controller general as appointed. Sub two, the health practitioners appointed under subsection one shall examine the inmate's mental health status and give their opinion in a written form report to the state controller of correctional service. Not later than two weeks from the receipt of the initial report, for submission to the mental health review board for review and issuance of appropriate certification, which shall be forwarded to the controller general, the chief judge, and other relevant authorities. Sub three, the mental health review board referred to under subsection two shall be constituted by the controller general on the recommendation of the state controller of correctional service and other appropriate state authorities in all the states of the Federation and the federal capital territory. With membership of at least one, A, psychiatrist, who shall be the head of the board. B, representative of federal and state psychiatric hospitals within the state or job rate zone. C, clinical psychologist. D, social worker. And E, medical professional personnel from the custodial centre. Sub four, where an inmate into whose sadness of mind and acquiring has been made under subsection one, A, is under sentence of death, the following provision shall apply. A, the superintendent shall as soon as possible report the circumstance to the relevant authority who, on receipt of the report, shall order the execution of the sentence to be suspended until the report of the mental health review board has been reviewed. The reason is that no one can be executed in terms of the death of person if they are of concerned mind. B, if the inmate is satisfied to be of concerned mind, the relevant authority shall order the execution of this, that shall order the execution of the sentence of death to be stayed and made by order in writing, direct the superintendent to send the inmate to a suitable mental health hospital. Sub five, where an inmate not under a sentence of death is satisfied to be of concerned mind under subsection two, the following provision shall apply. A, the controller general shall in writing, direct the state controller of correctional service to remove the inmate to a suitable mental health hospital. B, the inmate shall transfer to a directive made under paragraphs A and subject to the mental health laws being declared until he is satisfied by the mental health review board to be of concerned mind, or until the expiration of the sentence whichever occurs first. Sub C, if the inmate is satisfied to be of concerned mind, of, no, if the inmate is satisfied to be of concerned mind, the controller general shall in writing, direct that inmate be moved to the custodial centre to sign the remaining part of the sentence. And D, if the inmate is still detained in a mental health hospital when the sentence of imprisonment is about to be determined, the officer in charge of the mental health hospital shall give such information as may be necessary under the mental health law to consider the portion of the inmate shared detained under those laws as a person of concerned mind till the date of the determination of the sentence. Okay, so this section twenty-four leads to the fully operational lines. The last comment I made before we call the next second room is that there are three stages that we see in terms of the interface of mental health in correctional sen- centres. Recall, I spoke about the issue of the so-called civil lunatic and criminal lunatic. These are technology beyond the fact that they are still standing in game, but it is important to note that there are some persons who come into custody and designated as number one, they have committed an offence, and these offences are the such that they're also seen that they are of concern, so those are the criminal, as number one. There is also number two, which are the preventive detection people who are the so-called civil lunatics. Well, there is also a third category, and that is important that we note those third category even while we discuss about mental health. These are those who come into custody. Okay, their offences are nothing to do with mental health, they were sound, how people of some mind may take the offences to their community. They came in and they were put in normal cells, you know, because when I say normal cell, because some of the correctional centres have what they call a cell, not all. Then, because when you don't have those, as I said, those inmates are still trapped within the same places where, uh, other inmates are, and sometimes you just push them into one cell, and everybody that is mentally ill is responsible, what type of mental illness are you worrying? But those ones who came in and they were put in normal cell, maybe because of stress, maybe for other mis- predisposition, you know, they break down and they become mentally ill while in custody. So as we look at solutions and recommendations, let's think about these three categories. Thank you very, very much, and I think we need to call now the Pharmaceutical Society of Nigeria. Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, members of the panel and fellow participants, and good afternoon. My name is Francis Aisha Msiyavutu, the deputy president, North of Pharmaceutical Society of Nigeria. I'm presenting my president, who we have wanted to attend, is also attending another programme. So, and like you all know, Pharmaceutical Society of Nigeria is an umbrella for all practicing pharmacists, meaning those that are in the manufacturing sector, the community pharmacists, those in the hospitals, and those that are in administration like myself. So we have practice in the thirty-six states of the nation, this F C T. So in every state, you go to have the full compliments of Pharmaceutical Society, you have a chair there, and all the other compliments. And I'm sure that we do a lot of collaboration with, um, the correctional centers. I know that we do a lot of outreaches, um, to the correctional centers. It might not be documented, maybe there's no framework for that collaboration, maybe that is what we will work on after this, um, meeting. So, and we have submitted a memo, but I think from the beginning, from, um, when the. the, uh, doctor here was, uh, reading out the numbers of persons that you have, I know she said you have pharmacist, um, but no number. So I'm sure there are very few, that's why she doesn't want to say the number. Also, then if you have twenty-eight, it's a good thing, that's what I see. How many must it be?
From the distribution of the CG, twenty-eight. Yes, you're correct. Twenty-eight, but we also have the pharm tech.
Seventeen, seventeen, which is?
Pharm tech seventeen, pharmacist twenty-eight, but you know they have over two hundred and sixty-two correctional centers.
Yeah. So, so, um, even before I read out to my, my memo, like I said, I think I want to encourage the correctional centers, liars in every state that they are, they should write lies with either the Ministry of Health or the state primary healthcare board. And, um, you know, if you write to them, I say you want the clinic to be established on that particular correctional center.
And there's the Ministry of Health.
Ministry of Health or the primary healthcare, depending on how the state works. I know that Ministry of Health in every state is the overseeing ministry for all other health agencies.
Or the primary health.
For the primary healthcare center for the states, and they can establish clinics within that state. And then again, I think the professor here spoke about, um, a licensing with the federal Ministry of Health. You know, when, I know there are a lot of programs that, I mean, they, they give drugs free, they give services free. Um, I, I believe prisoners, I, I hope that's what the name that they are called, inmates. So I believe inmates are vulnerable groups. So there's this basic healthcare policy where it captures all the vulnerable. So I'm sure if you do that, I see that ever, um, most of the primary healthcare facilities in, in the state where I practice, you know, they have captured vulnerabilities, and this, um, drugs and services are given to them free. So maybe if you liars, then we'll be able to get some of these benefits that comes from the federal government. So, um, like I said, my memo is just talking about the pharmacists and the good pharmacy practice that is a global norm. Um, so, uh, we want to draw the attention of the panel to some of the selling points of the dominant pharmacy external laws in Nigeria. Mostly, you know, the regulation of, um, pharmacists is done by the Pharmaceutical Council of Nigeria, it regulates the standard of pharmacy practice and business in Nigeria. It is expects approved licenses and regulate the registration and practices of all pharmaceutical offices in Nigeria. It determines and sets standards for the training of pharmacy technicians, schools and colleges of technology, and then it determines the knowledge and skills to be attained by pharmacy technicians. Benefit of this information to correctional facilities, it is not worth either the umbrella to register pharmacist, pharmacy technician, and pharmacy medicine dealers is the Pharmacy Council of Nigeria. In effect, the correctional facilities cannot employ any of the listed stakeholders who do not have a correct license. So I notice the practice of, um, Pharmacy Council now it is an act that each of the hospitals will be registered by its pretended pharmacist. I don't know whether that is the practice here. If you have hospitals, um, that are in each of the facilities, you should have a registered pharmacist, who is the red, the superintendent pharmacist in that clinic, which should also be registered with the Pharmacy Council of Nigeria. This registration and licensing is done annually. So if that is not done, I recommend to the correctional center to please do that. Similar to section four, a group which gives approval, will go to PCN to register stakeholders, including pharmacists and pharmacy technicians for practice. And then section sixteen of the Pharmacy Council also lists stakeholders and specific registers for practice. And like I said, the correctional facilities can easily verify the professional status of the pharmaceutical manufacturer in Nigeria through checks and verification. And then any place listed for purpose of dispensing, selling, compounding, distribution, storage, stocking, retail goods, and, and, um, pharm- pharmaceutical manufacturing must also be inspected by the Pharmacy Council. Most times this inspection is not given over here, and that is to ascertain the skills and practices of that area. Um, like I said, there should be a direct information of pretended pharmacists, these are all laws of Pharmacy Council, which I encourage the, um, correctional center to, please liars with the pharmacist in charge and make sure that they are duly registered. And pharmacies, in public and private hospitals, clinic must be inspected, uh, always, and the benefit. So I think, um, what the memo asks was, all these related issues with pharmacy. But from the discussions that, um, was going on here, um, and this are some of the recommendations that I have. Um, like I said, we go, and PCN has branches in all the states, so I would encourage the correctional center to liars with these states. I know they have a lot of outreaches that are done within the states, and, um, a lot of the states also liars with the manufacturers, we see that they get, um, CSR, and these drugs are taken to the correctional centers for the states, based on their needs. So I think there should be strong collaboration between the correctional centers and states. I know that we do go visit, we do go after that attack, it's very, very difficult for us to have access in correctional, um, facilities. But, but, uh, still, I think last year we need to go in and keep up the work of drugs and mosquito nets. I know that for, and even where I practice, you know, they write most times to ask for free drugs, when we get them, we have, we keep them, and then, um, like I said, the mosquito nets, so it's, to be a good deal if that collaboration is enforced. And then, of course, other stakeholders, like I hear you talk about drug issues, um, in Katrina, I don't know about other states, but I know that we have an established pages that deals with, um, drugs, it's called KABUSA, like it's a bureau for, um, um, drug and statistics, something like that, treatment and rehabilitation. So, and I think it will do well also to collaborate with such agencies, and of course the neuropsychiatrist center, and then we have a lot of NGOs and CSOs that do a lot of this in Nigeria. So maybe if you mark them out, you'll be able to get a lot of work that you've done, you could do a lot of stakeholder engagement for you, and then do a lot of, um, awareness and policy businesses to policymakers to see that maybe increase in funding, um, in your budget, and even the limitation of business that you're talking about. And then I don't know where, um, the correctional center procure their drugs. I know that presently, um, the nation, we have like twenty-two states that have state drug management agencies, and a lot of these drug management agencies have signed MOs by virtue of, because we do get, um, quality and accessible drugs. So if that also is, um, the relationship with states that have GMOs, I just find we will to get good quality drugs, accessible and affordable to the, um, correctional centers. So that's, um, little bit that we have. Um, I will assure you that whenever you call on, yes, sir, even though you said you are, if you feel the call now, we're there. Yes, so, um, all we need to do is maybe write to the president, or maybe, um, call them, um, or call us for a meeting where we sit down and look at what the needs are and where we can come, um, you know, and support the correctional center. Thank you.
So thank you, ma'am. Please don't go, there were some questions you asked. I'm wondering whether the correctional service can give response to the questions you asked about, there's something she mentioned about the kind of certification, the kind of, uh, that has to happen before, did you get that point, or do you want? Okay, please, can you answer?
In the second row of the members of the panel, I would want to answer the, the question one about the certification in terms of the professional certification.
License, PCN license. Annual license.
Annual license. Actually, it is the practice of Nigerian correctional service that, um, the controller general, making my declaration, every year, all the professionals, medical doctors, pharmacists, nurses, public health, psychologists, all, every year, they must register with appropriate professional bodies. In fact, I got my, this two thousand and twenty-five year annual license, uh, in February, this, this February, and virtually about eighty to ninety percent of all the pharmacies in the sciences, right, are registered in the Pharmacy Council of Nigeria. Then the second question.
So do you register in your clinics, um, I mean, do you have like a pretended pharmacist for this hospital?
Well, where we have pharmacists, they are in those places. Where we have pharmacy technician, they are in that, in those areas of the families. But where we don't have, we are covered by other, uh, uh, professionals, by professional health personnel. But because of the positive, that is why we, uh, actually give, um, kudos to the president and commander in chief for approving the, the recruitment of medical doctors and nurses, and we want to add that we need more, we need pharmacists, we need other professionals also to recruit alongside.
Okay.
So I, I'll help you to also add that we should recruit more pharmacists, because these hospitals need to be registered by.
This is, I, I, that's why I, I asked for that clarification. Ma'am, the problem now is there is, we, the number of correctional centers in the country we've had, it's about two hundred and sixty, two sixty-one? Fifty-six? Two five six. Two five six. Ma'am, if you write, can you write two five six? Now, the number of, uh, pharmacies, they say is twenty-eight. So even now, we have problem, big problem. So I don't know if, I, I don't want to stress this, so whatever, if, um, your members that now, because what we are asking for is a more structured support, so just like we are asking for the other agencies, we want at least one in each state that can offer proper support to the correctional centers in these states. Now, whatever requirement that is required, because what this means that there are even some, that there means there is nobody, so not your people who have the license, please, let them a part of the ones that you are going to find the way for us to have this support system. But I do like a lot of the things you said, you talked about mosquito nets. Is it possible that we can have mosquito net for, can you give, they say how many? You have eight hundred, eighty thousand eight hundred inmates? So let's say, can you give close to about ninety thousand mosquito nets?
So, so madam, you see, um, a lot of these hospitals, let's come into the country to be given out free. And what they do is they say they do door to door. So they will not.
They can come and do door to door in the correctional center.
Door to door in communities. Why not, if you write and say, okay, we have correctional centers, we also have inmates there?
Yeah, so the, the agency, can you tell us the agency that is responsible for this?
So I want is the malaria consultant.
So if, if you have the contact that can assist, because there are two things, ma'am, because sometimes if there's a way, they're centralized, because you can say, when they go door to door, it is possible thing. Somebody said, I don't even want to go near anything that looks like custodial center. So I don't know, but is, if it's possible that a special, um, arrangement can be made that, or give it directly to all of the agencies, say, please make sure that you supply at least that one, since it comes free and it can be given free, nobody will now say that you can, so at least you know that you can have general coverage, please.
I'll find out how it's going to be done, and that is why I encourage you to also work with CSOs and NGOs.
Yeah, yeah, let me explain, let me explain now. I am an NGO, a, my position has been working on correctional support over thirty years, but NGOs cannot replace government. NGOs can provide whatever it take, anytime you're looking at, how do you make sure that you have sustainability? This is why we are looking at, so that the government can also take his role, why NGOs can also provide as much support as possible?
Okay, like, like I said, I'll find out.
Thank you. So malaria, the other one is, uh, pro bono, pro bono, uh, pharmacist, and it's one for each state, and then, and then.
I'll discuss with the president, see how he speaks with the state chapters.
Yeah, and even if it means they will tell us how frequently, because they also need to know the frequency of what they, that they have, how they can be going, and then, then there's one one.
Yes, and so I, I asked about how we do government of drugs.
Yes, there's, I want to come back to the drug thing. You know, there was something you said about even drugs that can be given free.
Yes, I know a lot of states that do buy free drugs for their communities, for the vulnerable, pregnant women, children under five. Sometimes if you write to this state, you know.
So again, thank you, but that's why we also want to ask for your guidance on that, so that the correctional service will not know what step that needs to be taken. But I do, like one of the contributions that you've made, I'm sure the panel have taken note of it. Thank you, and thank, there's somebody want to ask you a question. After that, please, correctional service, make sure you clap for them, so that they can do more for you. And do you want to ask question?
Yes, sir. Sorry, 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 man. Sorry, before, before we go there, we were talking about the supply of, uh, mosquito nets. I'm really bad.
That's what, that's what you said. No, no, we are coming, you know, I'm coming, wait, eh, sorry, wait, it's, it's like, it's like, I mean, I'm sorry. No, wait, 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 I want to, I want, please, allow us to take it this way. What, anybody that is before us will take what they offer, it doesn't matter, maybe a physician, psychiatrist, psychiatrist, who donated, nobody knows. Wait, wait, ma'am, before she's giving us a very vital information, correctional service, you must be taking notes. Please listen, because we are getting information. Ma'am, go forward, they're expecting.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I think that we should seize this opportunity to really, really explore. Adria, the pharmacy, she has said very important, she has given those government agencies. In this country, there's practically a government agency for anything you want. And it means the correctional services belong to government, it is one government. I think it's just a matter of lack of communication, because if there is adequate communication between the branches and agencies of government, the people in the correctional services, the custodial centers, they are Nigerians, and they, whatever the society is getting, they deserve to get it, but somebody has to advocate for them. And I think that it should be for a, let me give a practical example. When they take patients from the, you just raised an ask, now when they bring people from the custodial center, I have had personal battles, because when they bring, first of all, they want to change, and I say, no, changes are not allowed, then they put an armed person by the door. I don't even mind that. But then the problem now comes when maybe that patient needs some tests and so on, and we'll be told there's no money. In fact, I had cases where, okay, the family say they have money, they want to pay, and the correctional center will still say, no, 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 the family cannot pay, we have, and we cannot afford, I, anybody can dispute this. The man that was, uh, arrested in the plane the other day, who was shouting that somebody else won't be there, they brought him to, to national hospital, but they did not let him stay for, and just for somebody who had a pre-existing mental health condition. He just happened to have broken down in the plane, then because he was said, ah, this is treason, this is sedition, next he is in jail, but he was somebody who broke down with men, yeah, they knew, now you bring him to hospital, let us treat him. His doctor, legal say, oh, we know him, let us treat him. The family say, can he please go for treatment? No, 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 he's committing treason and sedition, a mentally ill person, and before you know it, he's taken away from our nose and returned to the custodial center. This is not the way to go about things. We, if, we, we are professionals, and I think that there has to be a way that the professionals in the correctional services have to stand their grounds to say, this is what the ethics of our profession demand. The problem I see is that they wear uniform, and because they wear uniform, they say, this is the law, and, yes, sir, or guys, instead of saying, no, this is what the ethics of our profession says, and I practice my professional ethic, and, and to me, this is the root of all these problems that we're facing, and it's going to be true.
Thank you very much, you have spoken well, um, you. So correctional, please, I think we, okay, correction, please, quickly, because we still have a lot of people and of professional associations that want to speak. Can you write the name of the association? If somebody can let the name of their association, I'll just speak now. Please, go ahead.
The secretary, ma'am, I just want to, most respect you, plead with the, uh, representative of the Pharmaceutical Society of Nigeria, to come to the aid of Nigerian correctional services in this particular area, among others. They, we have a drug manufacturer, as mentioned by the, uh, SCG Medical, a drug manufacturer, small compounded drug manufacturing, uh, company. A drug manufacturing, small compound drug manufacturing company. However, as pharmacist there, we want to do our job. But the resistance is coming from the pharmacists themselves. Because the registrar, I mean the NADA, in charge of registration and regulatory affairs, we apply, the control regional send us to Lagos two times to go and get NADA to come and inspect the facility. But instead of them coming, they said they inspected one hundred and sixty-five companies and not up to thirty percent of them are performing up to their thirty percent in stock capacity. We just want them to, the city want them to come and see the place and tell him what is needed. He is ready to do the other things. But they refuse to come. So it's, it's an opportunity that you are here, ma. Kindly help us through the outside. As the last speaker said, we are actually in the regulatory service. You help us from outside. Let them come and inspect this facility. We want to do the job. They literally are doing it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, thank you very much, ma. You can see that there's, there's a lot of need for what we do. So I'm, I'm sure you're not living in a corner. So please, so that you can see debates, you can get it. Uh, you, we have, um, someone I should have, please, let's, do you want, you want to say something before they clap for you?
Oh, no, that's all.
Please, what do you do? So I, I wanted to find out, do we have a random submission from the National Institute for Pharmaceutical Research and Development? You don't have, you don't have it in your record? Okay, so, but you will not, you can come and do it and then announce yourself, prof, so that we know. Uh, but since we would have preferred to have a proper, this is a just, given because there's also another organization that is waiting now, which is the representative of the medical laboratory professionals, professionals of the, um, professional, no, it is the Medical Laboratory Professionals Pristine Division of the Living by Design Mission as well as the Association of Medical Laboratory Scientists of Nigeria. And if Omokoye will call immediately after. So please get ready. And yes, ma, sir.
But it's interesting, just, just some comments you asked what- Yeah, um, what I just want to say is that with respect to this healthcare, you know that all of our this actually, oh, sorry. I'm Professor Philip Peters, um, from National Pharmaceutical Research and Development. I'm also here with my colleague, Dr. Azum. So we are presenting my, so, uh, sorry that we lost a bit of time. We thought that we're actually not really directly related to this because we research into medicines. But what I want to say is that if we, we know that all that pertains to healthcare, apart from issues of abuse, corruption, others, is actually all about money. And I was hoping that if possible, there could be a kind of correctional healthcare trust fund. So that this, to start with, maybe for each state and local government, they will be the foremost contributors to this fund. That perhaps, uh, since correctional is a federal government, every state, uh, the number of inmates for each state and local government can be documented in such a way that the state will have to make some contributions to this. And apart from this, maybe, um, religious organizations and also some other organizations can make inputs to this fund. So it will really help. And another thing again is that we're here sitting. Have you think there has been another independent monitoring and evaluation uh, committee that is related to correctional? That is independent from, from the correctional itself to look at, to look at things, it will be very good. So that then of the-
All right, that is what this panel is. This is actually called the Independent Investigative Panel on Alleged Corruption, Torture, Cruel, Human, and Degraded Treatment Against the Nigerian Correctional Services. So there are some members of the panel that do not work with the correctional services. I do not work with the correctional services. You know, not even with any company agency. So both of us are. So it's, it, thank you very much for that input. Thank you, sir. And if you have a note, your comment, and if you still feel like submitting anything, it would be free for you to do so. I would, I would want to, um, call the C former Oke to introduce herself and her organization. And as she's doing that, I would want Dr. Edu Madiyala, who has been on the, on the segment, to please be a stand line for, she definitely present eventually. I also would like to tell the Pharmaceutical Association because there was a comment made about the correctional services not being on the concurrent legislative list. There is a move where that some states are already passing their State Correctional Services Act. Sorry, law, because we have the Nigerian Correctional Services Act of twenty nineteen. We know that a certain state has passed it. We know, for example, that Adia, it has gone on the first reading. And some of the other states like Kanu, like you, uh, Clatu, Adamawa, Anambra, also at different stages, but it's also. But even before the passage of the law, we need to still make sure that the state government- Because at the moment, they are still asking correctional services to bring them for treatment. You know, and most of the people there are from that state. But so that's a violation. Please introduce yourself, your positions, your resume.
Okay, the panelists and everyone standing on existing protocol. I'm Aba Oke, a former, a medical laboratory scientist. I work with the Medical Laboratory Science Center of Nigeria. I'm a member of the Association of Medical Laboratory Scientists of Nigeria. I am equally presenting the Medical Laboratory Professional Frisbee Division of Living by Design Mission. Okay. So I want us to understand that Medical Laboratory Science Center of Nigeria is a body that works hand in hand with the association to ensure that we have laboratory scientists who are licensed and we have accredited laboratories. And this, put in place, ensures reliable laboratory results. So the MMS, which is the Medical Laboratory Science Center of Nigeria, is in all the state's geopolitical zone in Nigeria. Why the association is in every state in Nigeria? Okay. So I am happy that we have a laboratory service already in existence in the correctional centers. So we are coming in to empower them and equally to ensure that the laboratory services that are being delivered to the inmates are adequate and the laboratory results are reliable. Okay. So I'm going to give us a brief, okay, the health status of incarcerated individuals is a pressing concern worldwide. Inmates often experience higher rates of infectious diseases, mental health issues, and chronic conditions compared to the general population. The World Health Organization emphasizes the need for healthcare services in correctional centers to ensure that the health and well-being of prisoners are ensured. So the primary objective of our profession is to establish and ensure that there is access, that the inmates have access to health, good health status upon arrival, during incarceration, and upon release to the general public. We want to identify prevalent health issues and track changes in health status over time. We want to have an informed, evidence-based healthcare providers and interventions to improve the inmate's health. We only want to provide laboratory testing and diagnostic services to support healthcare delivery in correctional centers. And how do we want to ensure this? We want to collaborate with the correctional authorities. It's a good thing we already have the, the correctional authorities already have laboratory services in place. So we want to collaborate with them to establish partnership with inmates administrators to facilitate access to these inmates and ensure the success of the project. That we are going to conduct laboratory testing for these inmates upon arrival, during their incarceration, and before they are released to the general public. Number two, we want to ensure health assessments and sample collections. Conduct health assessments and collect biological samples like blood, urine, stool from this inmate at three time points, upon arrival, during incarceration, and upon release to the population. Then laboratory testing. We will come in to perform laboratory tests on collected samples to diagnose and analyze of various health conditions, including, including infectious diseases like HIV, HIV, hepatitis, diseases like diabetes, cardiovascular, and the rest of it, and metacardic disorders. Number four, we will do data analysis and interpretation, analyze and interpret laboratory results to identify trends, patterns, and correlations between health status and incarceration, reporting and dissemination of findings to the stakeholders, including correctional authorities, healthcare providers, and policymakers. So the essential core of our involvement in this is to improve prisoner health, enhance healthcare delivery in correctional facilities by providing laboratory testing and diagnostic services. We have intention of contributing to the development of evidence-based healthcare policies and interventions tailored to the needs of incarcerated population. We will advance research and knowledge, generate new insights into the health status of inmates and the impact of incarceration on their health outcomes. Our resources and supports. We will require laboratory equipment supplies, access to these laboratory facilities. Since it's already in existence, we will know where we can come in to empower the already existing laboratory facilities and equipment and supply of testing and analysis, transportation and logistics, support for transportation to and from correctional centers as well as logistical assistance for sample collection and storage, assistance with study coordination, data analysis, and recording. In conclusion, the profession intends to have, we already have a comprehensive plan and we are already working hand in hand with the Association for establishing a medical laboratory division that assess the health status of prisoners in correctional centers by providing laboratory testing and diagnostic services. This initiative aims to improve prisoner health, inform healthcare policy, and advance research and knowledge in this group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there are things to hear when you have also, you are in the office. I want to ask a question, please.
Okay, ma.
And first, just to mention from the record we have from the correctional centers, they say they have a total number of med lab scientists, twenty. Total number of med lab technician, fifteen. Total number of med lab assistants, twenty-five. Science lab technologists, eleven. You heard them, the number of correctional centers. Did you remember that?
Thirty-six.
Two, what?
Thirty-six.
Eh, eh. Okay. And my, so my first, so my first question. And then, do you remember the number of inmates?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty, eh, you remember that. So I want to ask, do you have members in all the states?
Yes.
Now, so there were things, obviously, that were mentioned that you were to say, if you're going to need to start this, and so, two questions. One, is it possible, just like you've asked the other, that you have these native, um, members that in each state that you can send to state and they are making commitment to assist the correctional centers in those states? It could be by telling us also half free commitment, you say every Monday, every Wednesday, every Thursday, whatever. We're going to see what you can do to them. Because part of what is owed us, they don't have two agents. Somebody call me?
Urgent, yes. I'm testing.
Eh, eh. So I don't know, you know, so even when you talk about the screening, they are not doing because, as you said, because they don't have politics. So I don't know what your station is going to assist. But then if there is also logistics needs on your side, do you have a way you can also look for maybe reach points within the station that can provide that for you to be able to? Because if you ask the Nigerian correctional services to give you transportation, I'm not sure they, they are laughing, maybe they will have to answer.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, just like I said earlier, I changed myself. I'm a member of the association. I equally represent the Medical Laboratory Frisbee Division of LBD Nation. Okay, so the LBD, the Frisbee Division is so passionate about inmates of this correctional, uh, facilities. And so it's, in fact, it's like our number one priority to reach out to this. And so the way we do it is to reach out to, um, we have people that import us some of these test kits. So we can reach out to them for some of this. We have a way, in fact, I mean, we do generally, we have a way of sourcing for our needs. Like if we want to do laboratory outreach, let me put it that way. So we have a way of sourcing for this, our needs. So we are not going to rely on the correctional facilities to provide these things for us. Are you fully want to- Okay, are you fully want to say that, um, our, the LBD Nation is equally working hand in hand with the association that trying to form a very strong bond relationship to ensure, because the association is located in all states where they have licensed scientists. They equally have licensed technicians because we are all incorporated into the Frisbee Division. So they are working hand in hand to ensure that there's always someone on standby to do this.
That is very, that is very good. So they are happy for you. So there are two things I want us to do quickly before we come, perhaps, one of the last persons. I see that, uh, they are think that the head of your, your Frisbee Division, Chineku Anukwe is online. So Chineku, do you want to, do you want to unmute at just one minute or two? Just say any additional thing you would like to say. Would like, you know, if you show us your video and or your stick, or whichever you prefer. While you're doing that, we would also call the founder of Gesta, Gescan to also address us. And just to let you know that the chairperson of the panel, Dr. Magdalene Ajani, is already seated. She's also the panel secretary of the Ministry of Interior. So she's seated here, so she will hear you. So Chineku, are you ready? If you want to unmute, okay, I think she is. So please, if you can project it.
Well, I'm the panel, we actually, everyone, panel and all those who are there, all people whom you observe. I just want to thank, uh, Yijia, who does our self Yijia. We do by design mission. I want to thank you guys for the prayer for how wonderful presentation. I wasn't able to be there. And just to emphasize that she said the collaborating, this partnership, the living by design partnership is collaborating with the Association of Medical Lab Scientists and then the Guild of Medical Lab Scientists. Now, the guilds are private owners of laboratories in Nigeria, in every single state. You find the guild members are there, they're licensed and they have their own, uh, house there. In fact, the leader of the guild is very interested in the correctional activity, uh, proposal that we have just put forward. So I just want to thank you for the time you've given us to present our proposal. And we will work on from there. Thank you very much for your question.
Thank you, thank you, Chineku Anukwe. You can see that the Nigerian correctional centers also clap for you. Thank you very much. So they will rush, I'm sure they'll be grateful upon this. I guess that the next presentation from the medical team will be coming from Dr. Edu Wawo, Wadierro, all the way from Canada, the founder of Gesta. So if you are here, can you, if you're still here, can you unmute and speak to us, also show your video? Are you ready?
Um, good day, everybody. Um, I may not be able to, okay. Let me try and see if I can show my video um, because of my, where I am at work. Um, I want to thank everybody that has spoken. I'm just stand on protocol. Um, it's just amazing the quality of information that has come out and the collaborative, um, energy that has come out of here. So my name is Dr. Edu Wawo. I'm a family physician in Canada. But my comment is in here is that my focus is access to care for underserved populations. And I definitely feel very strongly about the correctional centers. and I definitely feel very strongly about the correctional centers. Um, we have an organization, Gescan Solutions, which is a full, um, service technology company IT enterprise solutions firm, but corporate social responsibility on is health shaped drive. So this is an NGO that works to upgrade fledgling, um, health enterprises in the rural areas, bringing them up to code and providing assistance. So when I see and hear all the problems that are going on here, it seems very startling, but I'm happy that so many people are providing solution for us. So what I would like to prefer is what Gescan can offer, because I know I have very little time. We are very happy to, um, provide the telemedicine application. What I see as the fundamental problem, problem that is going through everything that everybody has said is capacity. We have too few professionals for too many inmates, beyond the budgeting and the collaboration and the information gaps and also, um, the lack of logistical support, the bottom line of we need people. So one of the things that I prefer is instead of trying so hard to get all the professionals who are very interested in that line to look at what we have on the ground and upscale and upgrade them and then to use technology to leapfrog over some of those infrastructural difficulties that we have. And the fortunate thing is that with the telemedicine application, we're able to connect providers who are remotely available to support providers who are living in Nigeria to bring these two parties together to care. And the beautiful thing about it is when it's enterprise, you can put all different specialties on that application. So we are actually looking at doing something like a universal health, uh, record system such that if an inmate is in there, any doctor that sees them from Bokolada, the next doctor from Tanzania can look at the records of the Bokolada doctor and continue the care seamlessly. When we train the community health extension workers or the nurses or the allied health professionals, they can be the physical bridge in there. So what that does is remove the necessity for you to have all the specialists in one place and with collaborative effort, a lot can be done. For example, when the lady was talking about training, investing, aid, um, mental health, if you actually put an automated system in place and they come there, check, 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 the person who is actually reviewing that data and giving the diagnosis and the information may not be in that correctional center. So we need to use the tools that are available now like AI in medicine and in allied, um, healthcare to help that happen. So the good news is that we're not talking about it, we have it and we're willing to collaborate with the prisons to bring this to bear. And with the NGO arm, with Dr. Uju's great and fantastic, um, collaborative pool, um, we can actually do some of the capacity building too, because you can use webinars to train a large subset of health workers and you know that every health worker in the correctional system knows the same information. So if you're working in one correctional system, it's like McDonald's, their burger is the same no matter where you are in the world. So those are some of the things that we can offer, the consultative services, the actual application and the mobilization of our workforce that is in Nigeria that is not to hide and then bring into bear people who are outside Nigeria, that's coming in Nigeria, so desperate to help in Nigeria, they just don't know who to trust and where to do it. And the organizations that if you show them a working model, they will be so happy to have all over the world in Nigeria. So we have, um, what we call the parcels, partnership apprenticeship relationship. And those are some of the, um, um, expressions of wisdom that we work with at the Leading by Design Nation. And for me, as I said, I'm a family physician and an IT specialist, at the same time, I, I, I am the prison division head of the partnership and collaboration, um, community in LBD. So what we do, we foster partnerships, we connect the dots, we see where we can help ourselves, their communities, for example, they're saying in the Jewish system, money does not lead their system until it has gone around six times. We are sitting on gold mines in our country, but because we're all in our silos, like the other lady said, there's no communication. What we need to do is connect the dots, bring what you have, I bring what I have, between, within all of us, we'll find all that we need. So to summarize, we have an application that can solve many of the problems that have been spoken about today. We have a team of experts here, if we put our minds together, what we don't have, we can add and we have, we want to bring to bear the idea that let's not be so focused on who we want to get, but also look at who we have and how we can upgrade them to make them do what we want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dr. Uju. And thank you for joining us, all the way from Canada, God bless you. And to say something that maybe resonates, which is that you have a lot of Nigerians in the health profession space, in the health sector, who have, have developed the country. So if there's any way through this platform that you're recommending, they can also make you good, that would be very, very helpful, especially since you're using technology to drive this, which means telemedicine and which means both the capacity building as well as, you know, connecting the dots, so that where, even if it's a correctional officer, a professional that is there, you have a serious case, you can just chat and say, I need help, what to do, you know, and somebody can let you know, uh, what services that, what prescription or what diagnosis and all of that. Thank you very much. I guess that we will also come back to you for a full presentation of what that platform looks like. And I think with this, you can agree with me that we have done a lot in terms of the health, with the group of the comments and recommendations that I've made. And the good thing is that all of the people and the professional associations that presented themselves did make pledges in terms of what they can do to assist. I, we see this, the partners see this as a no hanging food, which means even now, we can, you know, don't wait for budget challenges, something that's not happening from today or tomorrow, from next week. So let's look at this as maybe something we can do to operationize by next week. So at the very minimum, all of the professional associations that made presentations, uh, presentations, you would need the names of your representatives in each of the states and their contacts, those who have committed to providing some support to correctional service, under, in terms of your profession, but please, if they can let us know the frequency of what they will be doing, which days, whatever is comfortable, it doesn't matter, let's know what day, so that the correctional service can also display that we have a pro bono, uh, this person, Taka, he's coming once every day and the rest, and let's start that, this is a journey that will certainly continue. Having said that, the very last thing that we are going to do, which the, our chair promised us, when she was, when she was going back and she's here, is for a continuation of the session that we had yesterday. Um, you will recall that we had a presentation yesterday from a complainant who was there physically, so he had spoken and this is a relation of case number C slash twenty twenty-four slash IIP slash CO one zero. We will have at the moment the representative of the correctional service from Ogu State, who could have joined us yesterday, but they were stopped. And yeah, the only one, he's the only one that we were here and we can, there you go. Please, maybe you may have to come and introduce yourself and give your own version, um, if the lawyer wants to do that, you can do that. Okay, just, just hold on.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I know it's been a long day for all of us. Uh, before we go to the case, I just wanted to be sure that, um, we complete the medical session, um, just in case anybody in the, in the hall needs any clarification or contribution to the medical one before we close the medical session entirely, will be ready to take that. Yeah, okay, the lady, do you? Any other person? You can come to the mic, madam. Any other person who wants to make contributions, ask questions on the medical session?
Uh, thank you for this privilege. As a journalist, I know I'm not supposed to talk. Okay, thank you. My name is Kadinya Ali Hambekusu, I spent all my life in the rural area. I grew up in Abaka, as a single survivor, I was posted in there. So I want to commend everybody in the medical section, the community, so that I, I part of the municipal administration program for nutritious children and I know what you all do, how you help those in rural area, in other areas, bless you. The money that the federal government pays is not equivalent to what the services you render, especially in rural area. Those in the city, you don't know what they do. Medical head workers, medical psychologists, they're working off, they're working overtime and they should be committed. Having said that, I want to talk about staff. You were asking that what can the medical section do for, for the inmates? What about, what about these staffs? They are also traumatized. You were, I appreciate what you had, your focus was more on inmates. Staff have a lot too, they go to stress. Sometimes you go to general hospitals, you're in a area to see only one, major one, one nurse, and they're telling you, you don't have staffs, you don't have work. Sometimes you have emergency, but you don't have a look for them. Between, between the kids. I'm talking about other, okay, let's talk about the, so those staffs too, those medical staffs, they need, they need the training, they need the trauma, the trauma and the statistics to go back to. They need, even as much as those teams, they need to, because they witness a lot and it's a lot of witness to many things that we are not able to possess in the very medical arts. There are the time I battle with the medical professionals, so I know what it is to go through those things that they work on. Thank you, thank you.
Just for, this staff you're talking about, are they staff of correctional services, that in the community?
No, uh, we are very well educated staff.
In the community?
Not, because they're, they're, they cut across, cut across, some are inmates, some are from the correctional center, you know, they post, they cut across all sectors, some are sent out for better.
Thank you. And the presentation of the psychologist was really focused on both staff and the inmates.
Standing on the existing protocol. Um, thank you so much, Dr. Hambekusu, so many things for you for us in correctional service. And quoting on what you have just said, that governments cannot do anything, we have the, the understanding on that premises, I'm thinking out, outside the box. There are so many things outside health that affects the health of the inmates actually. And there's a way you could, you, you are doing a good work, bringing a lot of people that are involved in this to help us, to assist. There is a part, the, the part of the, um, association that can actually help us, which I want you to note, Ma, um, Manufacturers Association of Nigeria, where we have the pharmaceutical manufacturers association too. We could explore the idea of having their corporate social responsibility towards the Nigerian correctional service. Um, for instance, we mentioned the issue of beds, uh, beds for the inmates. We could even have some, some of our manufacturers having, making, uh, that can supply us beds and corporate social responsibility. And we can have some of the manufacturers of pharmaceutical drugs supplying us with all, uh, some drugs that are, that are being produced, because we, we, we love these things and it would go a long way. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all the contributions. So in the absence of that, we have put in any more contribution, we are putting close to the medical session for today. And so we will now take the defense.
I have a contribution in the.
Oh, please, uh, online, thank you, please. Please, you have the floor, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't make this a part of my contribution, um, as a, when I was doing my medical presentation, because, um, what I was going to say wasn't really medical, but because I have to go off to work, I needed to just check that thing. There are a couple of things that, um, came to my mind as I listened to all the brilliant presentations, um, actually empowering inmates. Here in the US, um, there's a lot of, a lot of correctional facilities employ the staff to do work. So when I was listening to the mosquito netting, saying, I'm like, why can't the inmates make their own mosquito nets? When I was listening to the, during the manufacturing, why can't they make their own beds? You know, and I know that we're not talking about something that's going to happen tomorrow, but if there's a blueprint, it will give them purpose, it will really focus them and it will actually do good. So it's something to think about, to actually have their length, skills and capacity that will actually be part of correcting the, and I am not in that system, so Dr. Uju, this might actually exist, but maybe looking at making it more voice to us and giving people a sense of purpose while they're in there. I came in a criminal, a terrorist, I came out a capita and I now have a trade scale, right? And we can do agriculture there and it doesn't have to be finding large plots of land, there's a lot of vertical agriculture that is available. And we can have programs like plant your own food, you know, so there's no food, it's hunger, you know, with a small plots of land on a red ladder, you can make all the vegetables you need, um, grow them, you know, with, with, um, different kinds of, of agriculture and hydroponic farming and so on and so forth. So these are all things that we should put in the, in the mix. So, uh, I, I know that I have spoken out of medicine, but like she said, all of these things have helped to make a healthy person. Thank you. So permission to follow up.
Thank you so much for your contributions, we appreciate it. We actually have correctional centers that are already, that are running already, definitely we need to scale up, so thanks for your contribution, we appreciate. Okay, so the defendants for the Ogu States, so you want to come to the mic or is your lawyer that is, please, that's for K C slash twenty twenty-four. I, I, C, there's something. Okay.
We have controller and we have, sorry, so we don't know which one to first.
Okay, please, just hold on, um, I'm, I'm just looking at the online, there are two hands that are, oh, online, uh, sorry, please. Gescan, okay, Gescan has spoken. Okay, Mr. Henry, do you want to please make your contribution?
Yes, ma'am, uh, I may speak freely.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. I want to sincerely appreciate everyone, I want to sincerely appreciate all the efforts that have been put in this project, make a good one, I, I, I quite recommend it. I want to make a humble suggestion, since you are the medical house. I want you. I want to, while supporting the priestly services and all the effort they have been giving. I also want to encourage them to also make use of the facilities that are made available to them. I have a brilliant to work with the last inmate of the team in November, who worked in Adamawa. In the two correctional centers that we went to, they have escape kits that we are still, still, still. They were, they were still, they're not in, they're not in, they're, the, the buses, we are still brand new. All the things inside there we are used to. And there are inmates who were having, you know, saw the state that, that, that normally the state, the instrument, uh, uh, they still would have been, that be used on them. I had to, you know, clear myself and I had to give instructions to them to go across the escape. Then use them to, to use, to apply escape for some of those inmates. So some of these things are, they might not be in software, but the people that are there should also be produced. Uh, thank you so very much for that, please, contribution, I want to thank all, thank you for all of your, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, we appreciate. So correctional service, please use your kits. Uh, they discovered some kits in Adamawa that you people still had in containers, uh, that are who they use. I also discovered a similar thing in Adamawa. In Keltus State, I think, I know, in Obashuku, right? In Obashuku, you actually had welding machines that were supplied and lots of installed, two of those was still there. Welding machines with welding session. We saw them, Shabu were telling in charge, I was like, eh, I still got to go to your store, because I insisted all the stores was reopened up. So please, it's not, I mean, people have come and given and donated to you, you need to put those things into use, okay? Because, because we didn't put it into use, that we saw it. Okay, thank you so much. This is fast pace and we have to stay people.
You were asking, so we need to go actually in charge, but first maybe you start with the, uh, the, the, but you need both of them. Both in charge and also to.
Mr. Chairperson, I want to pray for the individual, for the panel, for them to be abreast of what happened yesterday in respect of the problems.
Okay, that was the, that was the case, uh, zero one zero. So, uh, Madam Udu, if you can just bring them, it was the case of, uh, an inmate from Ogu State. We now to a traveling address and thank God for journey misses and welcome to our future. Thank, thank you very much. As we had already announced, this is, um, the case of the, um, it's C zero one zero. And that is Ferri Uwe, Uwe Ume, also known as Professor, after Professor. He had made, um, complaints regarding illegal, um, arrests. Um, the beach was concussed and then he had, was detained for five days and under an illegal warrant. So died yesterday, um, he, we asked the Nigerian correctional service to please look into this and what we asked for is to know whether number one, when the date so in, uh, indicated, whether there was any person who was detained at the prison. And I think he, um, around that time, by that name, because he was not sure whether that was the name that he was detained with or maybe with, or whether it's the professor. So it's Ferri Uwe, Uwe, Y, that's so, find out whether there's somebody by that name. Secondly, we asked that we would need to cite, we've seen the warrant and we needed to know whether that warrant was valid daily issued. And you know, the part of the, um, the, it relates to asserting whether is the valid warrant is signature. So we need to know. And then thirdly was if there were any other thing that you have, any other information you have on this matter that you would like a partner to, the partner would like to add in this issue, allegation of illegal arrest intention. Yes. Do you know anything about this person now?
Uh, who do I have to meet? Who do I have to meet?
But if you're going to firstly introduce yourself.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do. Uh, my name is Abi, I'm on the team, I just.